Good morning. Welcome to the June 11, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors Desmond Frost, Hume, and Kennedy.
Here.
And let's let the record reflect that Supervisor Serna will not be present today. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard live for free on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 14th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will also manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To send a comment by email, send that to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please seek Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. I'm particularly happy that we point out that seating is limited. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, please.
Your first item is public comments relating to matters not on the public agenda, and we do not have any public comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Wow. Okay. Next is your consent items, 2 through 69. And you also have an off-agenda item to determine if you want to hear this. So Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, Pat Hume from the 5th Supervisory District and Rich Desmond of the 3rd Supervisory District traveled to San Diego, California on May 28th through 29th, 2024, for a study visit on homelessness. First, we'd need to determine the necessity to hear the item, and I'll take a vote.
So move.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And then, second, I need a motion to receive and file the item.
So move.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, for your matters 2 through 69, the clerk does not have any notes.
Okay. Is there any other members of the Board that would like an item pulled or make comment? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please read item 31.
Okay. Item 31 is a contract for the South Sacramento Safe Routes to School bids to be received on July 11th. The environmental document is a categorical exemption.
I just wanted to point out and just thank staff for bringing this forward. This has been a long time coming, a long time in the making. You know, students are now going to be much safer walking to school in the very footsteps that our county executive once made. So I just wanted to give a hearty thank you on behalf of South Sacramento. So next, item 62.
Item 62 is a continuous authorization to execute a three-year, zero-dollar memorandum of understanding with the local federally qualified health centers to establish a referral program for the Sacramento County School-Based Health Center Program.
Thank you again. I want to thank staff, Siobhan and your group. This has been also a heavy lift when we're dealing with bureaucracies who sometimes, and I'm not speaking of our bureaucracy, but bureaucracies that sometimes put process over people. You know, we stuck with it and continued to try to find creative ways to get through, and there's a lot of students that are going to be better because of it. So thank you very much.
Okay, we do have public comments for item 2. Would you like to take that up now?
Yes.
Okay. Beth Hassett?
Good morning. I'm Beth Hassett. I'm the CEO of Weave, and I just want to thank Supervisor Frost for allocating these funds to Weave at a time when our funding is at great risk. This is a big boon for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and sex trafficking. It also provides funds for a very unserved and underserved part of the county. With this money, we'll be able to open a shelter for domestic violence victims and their children in the Citrus Heights area. There is no housing out there for these victims right now. We'll also be expanding our programs, including counseling for children and adults, legal services, and K through 12 education, and be able to do outreach out into the community to businesses and unserved and underserved communities. So we're very appreciative.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
I just want to say thank you for being here, Beth, and I'm delighted to support Weave. And I also want to especially give a shout out to Siobhan Katari and her team for connecting the dots and letting me know there was a way I might be able to help turn around something challenging in Citrus Heights and the surrounding areas. I really appreciate the work you're doing there and the creativity and your willingness to help out. So thanks for everything. Thanks.
And Beth, thank you for being here today. Thank you for everything you do with Weave and First Five and all you do in the community. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Put your public comments for consent matters.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, next item, please.
Okay, so it's 9:39, and we're just ahead of schedule, which is unusual. Would you like to take your...
Let's do it.
...appointments? That's item 80. Okay. Continuing to July 9th, the Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Council, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Youth Commission. Continuing to July 23rd, the Community Review Commission, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Galt Arnold Cemetery District, Human Services Coordinating Council, North Highlands, Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sylvan Cemetery District, excuse me. Continuing to August 6th is the American River Parkway Advisory Committee, the County Service Area 4C Delta, and the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, and Rio Linda Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your first item today is the Adult and Aging Commission.
Continue to August 6th, please.
Thank you. Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please reappoint Christopher Ives.
Do you want to waive the process?
And waive the process?
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Children's Coalition.
Continue to August 6th.
Thank you. Civil Service Commission. I do have the notes for Supervisor Serna. He would like to appoint Sally Lee and waive the process.
Actually, I'll make the motion. Flo doesn't get to do that. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And then, we have the Casumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council. I'll start with Supervisor Frost.
I apologize. I do not have my vote sheet. Can you help me?
Yes, I have notes to continue yours to July 23rd.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and then Supervisor Hume.
I have my vote sheet. I would also like to continue to July 23rd.
Okay, great. Thank you. County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes. I'll start with Supervisor Frost, and it looks like you're continuing to August 6th. And Supervisor Hume?
I would like to nominate Patsy Nimitz. Is this an opportunity where I would waive reading? Ask to waive process?
Second.
Can?
Okay.
Would you like to do that? Yeah.
Sure.
And was the second from... Thank you. Unanimous vote with those members present. Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District.
Please reappoint Jeffrey Rothberg and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Recreation and Park District.
Please nominate William Hambrick and waive the process.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. So I have Supervisor Serna's notes to appoint Stormy Bergen and waive the process.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And then, for Supervisor Kennedy?
Please continue to August 6th.
And then, for Supervisor Frost, I have a note to continue to August 6th. Okay. Sacramento County Employees Retirement System Board of Retirement.
Please continue to July 9th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board. I have a note for Supervisor Frost to continue to August 6th. Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Hume?
Continue to July 9th.
Okay. And then Supervisor Kennedy?
Continue to July 23rd.
Got it. And that concludes your nominations.
All right, we will take a brief break. Okay, we'll come back to order. Clerk, please call the roll of the reestablished form.
Supervisors Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a form.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 70 is the County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number 3, Public Hearing to Establish a Service Charge Within the Garcia Rivera Subdivision.
Good morning, members of the Board.
Morning, Joe.
Joe Grassick with County Engineering, here to present this item. So the Garcia Rivera subdivision is located about 2,000 feet south of Florin Road, east of and adjacent to Bradshaw Road, and proposes 70 residential lots. In response to a rezoned condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the establishment of a service charge for County Service Area Number 10, which provides trip reduction services. And in response to that request, a notice and protest ballot were mailed to the property owner on April 26th. This item proposes the levy of an annual service charge of $126.88 per single-family residential lot. And if there are no questions from the Board, we recommend that the Board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral public testimony, objections, and protests, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any questions from the Board? All right, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the Board of this item at this time?
We have no public comments for this item.
Okay, and seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Would the clerk please tabulate the ballot?
We've received one ballot. We've received one ballot for the annual service charge to be levied on the Garcia Rivera subdivision. The legal owners are RDS Capital Builders, and they are in favor of the annual proposed change. And this is for parcel numbers 066, 0100, 034, and 035.
Thank you, Joe. Would you please read into the record the changes?
Yep, I will now read the resolution fill-ins. So in Section 2, at the close of the tabulation, the Board received zero oral and written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the Board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 71, 2023 California State Legislative Update Zoning Amendment. This is a zoning ordinance amendment to amend Chapters 3, 5, 6, and 7 of the Sacramento County Zoning Code to incorporate changes in California state law related to zoning and land use countywide. The environmental determination is a notice of exemption.
I don't know that the podium will go any higher than that.
We'll push it. We'll see where it can go. There we go. Good morning. My name is Jacob Dodd. I'm an associate planner with Planning and Environmental Review. This item is a zoning code amendment package to implement changes in state legislation that occurred or became effective on or before January 1st, 2023. So due to some staffing shortages during COVID in the past few years, we haven't been able to do one of these legislative updates in a little while. So we're kind of doing a catch-up with this package. So it's a little bit bigger than what we hope to see in the future. So we're going to be proposing to amend Chapters 3, 5, 6, and 7 of the zoning code, again, to capture all of these changes, all of these state bills that went into effect. And I'll emphasize here that all of the changes proposed in this amendment are solely to ensure that we are consistent with state law and to codify existing practice in the planning and the various other departments. So there's no county-initiated policy change with this zoning code amendment package. This here is a summary of all the topics, the legislative topics that is included in this package. I'm going to try and move through these as briefly as I can to keep us moving. So please feel free to interrupt me, stop me at any point with any questions or comments. So with that, we'll just go ahead and dive in with the first topic, and that's multifamily housing in commercial zones. So both of these bills here are aiming to achieve the same goal of allowing multifamily development by right in any zone that allows office, retail, or parking as permitted uses. Now, here at the county, our two largest commercial zones are the general commercial and the light commercial zone, which already allows multifamily development by right. So we don't really expect these bills to have a huge impact on us, but it does open up the option in a couple of other zones where it's either prohibited or there's an entitlement. So we're putting that in the code there, calling out those state requirements. So that path is available. ADU Development Standards. So state ADU law changes pretty much every year, and so they like to make tweaks to development standards and allowances. In this one, they are allowing ADUs to go taller than 16 feet in certain circumstances. That's currently the maximum height for the majority of ADUs. Some common sense clarifications with junior ADUs. And then, the biggest change we saw is allowing ministerial deviations to the front and side street yard setback for ADUs to go up to 800 square feet. So essentially, if a lot is too small, there's topography issues, an applicant can't fit the ADU within the setbacks of their lot, we're required to approve ministerial deviation to that front yard setback right up to that 800-square-foot size. So if they want to go beyond 800 square feet, they want a bigger setback than what's needed, they'll still go through the regular special development permit process.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. So on the setback, just so I'm clear, I understand the front yard setback, but side street or side street yard, front and side street yard setbacks, what are the side street yard setbacks currently?
Currently, it's 12 and 1/2 feet from the side street. So the front yard is 20. So it's typically the narrower edge of the lot is usually what we would call the front yard for setback purposes. And then, when it comes to two right-of-ways coming at intersection, that other street front edge is the side street yard. And that's a 12 and 1/2-foot setback.
And this would have no impact, this would not impact the setbacks between yards, right? Which I think is four feet right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. If they want a deviation to those interior, that side and rear four-foot setback, they'll go through the regular special development process.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume? Thank you, Chair. Since we're paused, I had two had a question about this. It would still have to be outside of the 12 and 1/2-foot public utilities easement, correct?
Yes, that is correct. Those aren't present on every single lot. So we're making sure that if that easement isn't there, there's that option. But yes, it would still have to be out of that easement, and we'd let county engineering kind of determine whether an encroachment can occur.
Great, thank you. Continue.
All right, keeping with ADUs, we have short-term rentals in ADUs and junior ADUs. So this is a bit of a gray area in state law. Essentially, the law changed back in 2020 that stated new ADUs created on or after that date have to be used for rentals for 30 days or longer. They allow the option for cities and counties for ADUs created before then to either allow short-term rentals or require that longer-term rental of 30 days or longer. So state law has been kind of silent on it. They give us the option. The zoning code has been silent on it to this point. And so staff have been approving short-term rentals in ADUs if they can prove they got their building permit before that date. So here, we're just proposing to codify that existing practice. It's not a change in procedure. It was just absent from the zoning code. So we're trying to make that clear. Junior ADUs were not created as a concept in state law until January 1st, 2020. So it's not possible to have a junior ADU before that date. So it's not possible to have a short-term rental as junior ADU at all. So we're making it clear, there's no circumstance in which you can have a short-term rental in a junior ADU. And again, those are both existing practice that we're just proposing to codify. Off-street parking. So two bills related to off-street parking reductions. The first one is kind of a bigger one in that the state says that all projects within a half-mile of a major transit stop, existing or planned, is not required to provide off-street parking or meet county minimum parking requirements, except for some state-required ADA or EV chargers. And so that includes, primarily for us here at the county, that includes bus rapid transit stops qualifies as major transit stop. So any bus rapid transit stop existing or planned in the current planning horizon, you're not going to be required to provide off-street parking unless some exceptions are met.
Does light rail count?
Light rail, let me check. I don't believe it counts. I wrote it down here.
Supervisor Kennedy, yes, it does.
Okay.
It does. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Oh, yes, I have that right here. Yes. The second one here is for religious institutions are allowed to remove up to 50% of their parking spaces to accommodate a housing project. And they're not going to be required to replace or find those parking spaces somewhere else. So we're just putting those in the code to make it clear, again, what parking reductions are administrative and aren't available. State Density Bonus Law. So this is another section of the government code that the state modifies pretty much every year. There's even more changes that occurred since this current update. They just weren't able to make it into this current package. We implement state density bonus law in our zoning code as what we call the Affordable Housing Incentive Program. It's in Chapter 6 of the code, and we put it in back in 2022. And so this package here is just kind of doing a cleanup of that, fixing a lot of definition and terms that were slightly inconsistent, some inconsistencies in parking ratios. The biggest change that we saw here is that the state removed a clause that says we can no longer deny a project for adverse impacts on the physical environment. So what that means for us is we were requiring a discretionary entitlement, a development plan review, in order to do a sequo analysis to evaluate those impacts on the physical environment. The state removed that clause from the state code, and since now we're no longer evaluating for those physical impacts, we're moving the project to a non-discretionary design review. So when it's just a standalone density bonus project, they're no longer going through a discretionary entitlement, just non-discretionary. So that's the biggest change. And we've already started implementing that here in planning. We're just codifying that in the code in this package. EV chargers and hydrogen fueling stations, which is on the next slide, very similar in that the state says we can't apply any local codes and ordinances to EV chargers or hydrogen fueling stations other than health and safety concerns. So they don't have to adhere to the zoning code, setbacks, landscaping, tree ordinance, design review, anything. They just go right in for their building permit, and we keep them moving. Hydrogen fueling stations have a couple extra requirements for where they can be located and in how they define the hydrogen fueling station, but the same standard applies that we cannot apply any zoning code standards to the equipment to store and dispense hydrogen fuel. Everything else on site still has to adhere to the zoning code, go through designer view, entitlements if needed. Family daycare homes.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a roughie one.
Yes.
Going back to that point, that's if it's a standalone-only hydrogen fueling station or an electric vehicle charging station. But let's say that it has attached to it a mini-market or something like that.
Right. So for hydrogen fueling stations, the definitions on the slide there, they very narrowly define hydrogen fueling station and what gets exempt to the equipment used to store and dispense hydrogen fuel. So everything else on site, because hydrogen fuel stations look more similarly to a regular gas station. So convenience store, if they want a canopy to cover it, car wash, if they want to have regular fuel, gas fuel, all of those are still subject to designer view and entitlement. So it's really just that equipment.
So it's really not likely to have a huge impact?
No, not likely, no. Yeah, I think in most situations, we'll see where they have an existing gas station, and they want to stick a couple hydrogen fueling pumps on site, they just get to kind of move through.
Got it. Thank you.
Family daycare homes. So these are the daycare, individual, independent daycares usually in a single-family home. The state says that small and large family daycare homes are subject to the same requirements as whatever the residential use that they're located in. So currently, the code has a bunch of extra requirements for the larger facilities, separation, parking, and we're just taking those out because the state says we can't apply those anymore. So if it's a single-family home, the daycare home just has the same regulations as any other single-family home. And sidewalk vendors is our last one here. So this bill's a bit older, and there's been some updates that the state have passed since then, but essentially states that cities and counties cannot prohibit sidewalk vending within rights of way or within public parks. The zoning code doesn't have much purview over the rights of way. We have a little bit of authority over public parks, and so we're just going to be excluding sidewalk vendors from the zoning code because they would fall under what's called temporary concessions, which has a laundry list of regulations, most of which the state wouldn't let us implement anymore. So we're just kind of carving out sidewalk vendors specifically from that part of the code. of the code.
Supervisor Hume. Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So that concludes all the topics here in this amendment package. And so if there's no other questions or comments, staff and the planning commission recommend that the board supervisors determine that the notice of exemption for this project is adequate and complete, and to approve the ordinance amending Chapters 3, 5, 6, and 7 of the zoning code. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So a lot of these items, I think, are processes that we're looking to streamline anyway as we go about our development review changes. But some of them, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is the state stripping away and impinging upon a lot of local land use discretion. So for the majority of them, I don't have issue. And I know that even in the ones where I do have issue, I probably don't have a lot of leeway because it's state law at this point. But I just want to point out what I see is some real significant issues that there will be a reckoning someday amongst folks who live in established neighborhoods. And so the first being that according to the state's ADU provisions, and now being codified if they were built before January 1st, 2020, neither the ADU nor the primary dwelling needs to be owner-occupied. And so there is a possibility that both the primary dwelling and the ADU could be separate, you know, choose your rental program, Airbnb, Verbo, whatever. And so essentially, you're turning a residential neighborhood into a commercial enterprise. Furthermore, by eroding the front yard and side yard setbacks, now those ADUs have less stringent requirements relative to setbacks and building heights than the original primary dwelling did in many cases. And even where it's in the backyard, it can be four feet off of the rear yard fence, up to 16 feet tall. Now, we're allowing that to also occur in the front yards or in the side yards, with no parking spaces, with no upsizing of infrastructure. So you're essentially turning what was, you know, say, an RD5 or RD7 residential neighborhood into an RD10 or an RD14, drastically altering the aesthetic and practical nature of that development. Again, there's nothing I can do about that, but I'm just saying that this is going to create issues, and people are going to lose their minds as these start to roll out. And there are places within California, I think, where this probably makes great sense. I don't know that Sacramento County is one of those places today. The other issue that I have is with the sidewalk vendor provisions for a couple of reasons. One, you know, when food trucks first started to be a thing, there was a hue and cry from the brick-and-mortar industry, as far as everything that they had to go through to get up and running and their expenses on a monthly basis. And the food trucks essentially could roll up and park and be open for business. Now, we're taking that and making it even more imbalanced by allowing these sidewalk vendors to just pop up. Most of them are smart enough that they don't set up until after 5:00 p.m., and so our EMD says, well, we're closed down for the day. We can't even go out and inspect. And so they're literally flaunting all of the health codes and regulations and things that every other food provider had to go through. I mean, my goodness, when we have a community event, we are stricter upon the nonprofits that are there trying to earn a little something for their organization relative to screens and permits and wash basins and everything else. And these people just pop up and sell, and who knows whether their food is expired or not. In addition to that, public rights-of-way were put in place for the benefit of the public. And so now if we're allowing sidewalk vendors, and allowing, again, is a nonsensical word at this point because we're being forced to permit them, you have ADA requirements, you have other things, you have just the general aesthetic nature. I mean, we're not just talking about food vendors. These are cell phone vendors, insurance people, windshield repair, ding repair people that set up their pop-ups along the street and essentially turn what was a public-purposed improvement into a private enterprise. So again, I don't think that I have much leeway that I can do here today, but I just want to say that these are the slippery slopes that I think erode the quality of life for many of our residents. And at some point, hopefully, we will reach a high-water mark and force our legislators to rethink how much they're trying to foist down upon the local jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jacob, for the presentation. And I definitely appreciate Supervisor Hume's comments because I think we should all be, I mean, there are some very good things in recent legislation, but I think we need to be very cautious of becoming that frog in boiling water because I think it's going to continue these legislative efforts to take away our local land use authority. When it comes to the ADUs, actually, refresh my memory. What are the requirements for owner occupation of the primary residence? I know this is kind of an academic discussion right now for purposes of this item.
You're about more generally or specifically to short-term rentals?
Specifically to account, well, how about for the primary residence? Is there any either state or local requirement that the primary residence be occupied by an owner?
No, not for a regular ADU. So state law actually specifically states we cannot have an owner occupancy requirement.
For the ADU?
For the ADU, or to rent, for either. So the junior ADU must be, if there's a junior ADU, that one has to be owner-occupied in either junior ADU or the primary. That standard does not apply to ADUs.
For a regular ADU. How about as a condition of a short-term rental, like an Airbnb rental? Would we have the discretion to incorporate that into an ordinance that the primary residence has to be owner-occupied?
Oh, yeah, I know that we do have an owner occupancy requirement. I don't know if we apply that to ADUs pre-2020. I'll turn that over to Wendy.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, boy. Where's the stool?
I play center. Wendy Hartman, Principal Planner. For our short-term rental program, we do have a requirement that the owner reside on the property at least six months out of the year, which means that they need to reside either in the primary residence or in the ADU. We do have a few that I know have come through our system where they very specifically said they downsized, moved themselves into the ADU and are renting out the primary. But that's the oddity. Most of them are living in the primary and then are renting out the ADU.
Okay.
But as far as an owner occupancy of, as Jacob said, we can't require an owner occupancy outside of that situation.
I think that's important. I mean, because that was the intent with the ADU laws, local and the state level, was that someone would continue living in the primary. This would not create a new rental market of both the primary residence and the ADU. I mean, I think that was the intent of this. And so I think we need to be very careful going forward that it does not become the exact opposite of that. So, yeah, that's, I appreciate Supervisor Hume's comments about this. In terms of the short-term rental, you know, Todd and I had a discussion yesterday. I know that this is more of a prospective thing for the newer ADUs, that they would not be allowed to do a short-term rental under 30 days. But in terms of the existing ADUs that are out there right now, you know, our planning director has kind of instilled in me the importance of having consistency in everything we do. And so now you're essentially creating two tiers of rules. So I'm not asking that it be incorporated into any action today, but what I would like staff maybe to come back later and come back to the board, evaluate whether it makes sense to those ADUs that are pre-2020, is that the date? Those ADUs that are pre-2020, should we require them to comply with the new short-term rental standards that we presumably will be adopting today? So could we do that at a later date? Todd? Okay. I'd like to just kind of tee that up. And then in terms of the sidewalk vendors, you know, I, again, here Supervisor Hume, and that's been a frustration for mine, of mine, in District 3. And I talked to Siobhan about this from the EMD perspective because I think we're seeing more and more vendors out there, usually in the evenings, that are not inspected by EMD. And I think that's extremely important. And I know we run into a lot of times, hey, it's after hours, it's on a weekend, and I see Janaya's out here as well. And I think you come up with some plans. We've had multiple discussions about this, but I want that to remain a priority, figure out how we are going to make sure those vendors that are selling food are inspected and that we're really safeguarding the health and safety of our constituents in the county. And also, in terms of the sidewalk vendors, whether they're a food vendor or a cell phone vendor or whatever, I mean, even though they're allowed to be in the right-of-way, they're not allowed to block a sidewalk still, right? I mean, nothing in state law preempts that. Is that correct? I'll look to our county council. I'm assuming that's still the case.
Right. They do have to comply with the laws regarding the right-of-way, but they can be in the right-of-way.
Right. And sometimes that's, you know, that's arguable whether they're blocking. But there are some instances where they're completely blocking a sidewalk, and in those cases, enforcement action can be taken on them, notwithstanding their legislative authority to be vending on a sidewalk. So I just want, I think that's important, and I think we shouldn't shy away from ensuring, you know, doing what we can do still at the local level to make sure they're obeying the rules. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Do we have any public comment on this item?
Do have one public comment. Kareem?
So is this item 72?
Yes.
No, this is 71.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Would you like to comment on this item?
Okay. We have no public comment. Then bring it back to the board. Is there a motion? I'll second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
For your next item, this is a community plan amendment, rezone tentative subdivision map, use permit, special development permit, and design review for a property located at 6416, 6420, and 6422 Hazel Avenue. And this is in the Orangeville community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration. I'll also take the oaths at this time, and I do, we do have a public speaker on this item. So if you're here, I'll go ahead and take your oath now. Thank you. If you wish to address the board, please stand to be sworn. Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm? Okay, when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Thank you. Kimber.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am not LeAnn Mueller, but I am Kimber Gutierrez. I'll be presenting the Hazel Ridge Project on behalf of LeAnn today. So the project site consists of three parcels located on the east side of Hazel Avenue, between Central Avenue to the north and Greenback Lane to the south in the Orangeville community. The property contains a single-family residence that was constructed in the 1950s, and the site is relatively flat but does change in elevation from the highest point, which is at the northeast corner, to the lowest point at the southeast corner by approximately six feet. And the majority of the vegetation on site contains grasses and a variety of native and non-native trees, which are predominantly around the residence and along the perimeters of the property. The property is currently zoned RD5 and has an RD5 community plan designation. The surrounding area, as you can see with the visual, the zoning map, there is a mix of low-density residential zoning ranging from RD2 to RD5, with more commercial uses and higher density along Greenback Lane. Immediately adjacent to the property to the east is a residential subdivision ending in a cul-de-sac, which is zoned RD3. The properties to the south and west are developed with residences zoned RD5, and the properties to the north are also zoned RD5 but contain larger parcels and are developed with a residence, and some are vacant. This particular property is considered an infill site with one point of access to Hazel Avenue, and there are no stub streets or other existing points of connection available anywhere else around the property. A tentative subdivision map to divide the properties into 20 lots was approved by the Planning Commission in 2004. However, the map was never recorded, and the entitlement expired. I did also want to note, which is not on the slide, that this property was briefly included in the countywide rezone project to increase the density to RD30 for affordable multifamily development. That was removed out of the countywide rezone project at the receipt of this application. So the applicant is requesting a community plan amendment and rezone, tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, special development permit, and design review. The community plan amendment and rezone would be to change the existing RD5 land use designation to RD10. That's both zoning district and community plan designation. The tentative subdivision map would be to divide the 4.63 gross acres into 23 single-family residential lots, 12 half-plex lots, and one drainage basin lot. So that's a total of 36 lots in the RD10 zoning district. I did also want to note that the actual density of the project would be 7.6 dwelling units per acre, so it would not be meeting the maximum of the 10 dwelling units per acre per the zoning district. There's also a special development permit to deviate from development standards, which I'll go over in more detail on the next slide, and then a designer view to ensure compliance with our countywide design guidelines. So a special development permit is being requested for a number of development standards. The first that I'll go over is the minimum corner lot area and minimum interior lot area specifically for half-plexes. So the minimum corner lot area for a half-plex is 3,500 square feet, and the interior half-plex area is 3,000 square feet. As proposed, all six corner half-plex lots are less than 3,500 square feet, and five interior half-plex lots are less than 3,000 square feet. The next deviation would be for the public street frontage, so the entire 36-lot subdivision would be served by private roads and private street network. And then the applicant is also requesting deviations to a number of setback requirements. So front yard, minimum front yard, minimum rear yard, and then the setback leading up to a garage or carport. So the minimum front yard setback is 20 feet. All homes are proposed to have a 12 and 1/2-foot front yard setback. The minimum rear yard is 20% of the average lot depth for depths less than or equal to 125 feet. There are a variety of different rear yard depths being proposed. If you'd like me to go into more detail on that, I can. And then for driveways, they must be a minimum of 19 feet in length. However, if they're leading to a garage or a carport or opening up onto a side street yard, it shall be 20 feet. They are proposing to just have 19 feet leading to garages in all situations. An initial study in mitigated negative declaration was prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for this project and was released for public review on March 29th of this year. The environmental analysis discussed impacts to land use, traffic, noise, air quality, and greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and drainage. The environmental analysis concluded that the project would result in a less-than-significant impact to most environmental topics. However, in regards to air quality, biological resources, noise, and cultural resources, the analysis concluded that the project would result in a less-than-significant impact with inclusion of mitigation measures. So a mitigation monitoring and reporting program has been prepared to ensure compliance with those measures. So this is actually the project development plan. So this gives a little bit more detail than the tentative subdivision map in regards to the design of the subdivision. So the project will have, I'm just going to kind of walk through the design, which is, the project will have one point of access to Hazel Avenue and provides a modified grid pattern with a hierarchy of streets. So the entry driveway is proposed to be gated with adequate room to accommodate vehicles that may need to turn around, and a larger 38-foot wide street is proposed through the center of the subdivision with five smaller 25-foot wide streets at right angles coming out of that central drive. Two of the small streets, which are along the north, are stubbed right at the property line. This is to provide future opportunities to connect to vacant and underutilized parcels to the north. As I mentioned, there are larger parcels and undeveloped parcels on the north side of this project site. Internal streets, again, are proposed to be private and would be maintained by a homeowners' association. And then going into the actual lots themselves, so there are 23 single-family residential lots proposed, 12 half-plex lots, and one drainage basin. The single-family residential lots are placed along the perimeter of the development with the half-plexes to the interior along the central street. The intention of this placement was to have the larger lots adjacent to the surrounding development to provide some compatibility with the surrounding area. And then 15 of the single-family lots are proposed with two-story homes. It's a little bit hard to see on the PowerPoint, but there are some gray shading. That signifies the footprint of the second story. So the remaining lots, including lots 14 through 17, which are along the eastern property line, will be single-story residences. And that, again, is to provide some compatibility as it abuts the existing residences along Augustine Court.
Excuse me, Kimber. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I had two questions relative to that map. And so the first one is, you mentioned at the start of your presentation that the drainage of the lot currently, or the slope of the lot currently, goes from roughly the northeast to the southeast.
Northeast to... Yes, that's correct.
And so this may be a question for Mr. Baker, but I'm curious, if that's the case, why would we put the detention pond at the higher end of the lot rather than allowing the natural flow to continue and have the detention pond there at Lot 29, which seems to be the natural drainage of the property as it exists?
The drainage lot is here.
Correct.
So that is the southeast. Am I wrong? Which would be the lowest point.
Oh, I see. Not the southwest. Gotcha. Okay, so the lot drains that way.
Yes.
Ignore that question. Thank you.
No problem.
So then my second question, and I asked this when I met with the applicants, is the stub street to, going to the north, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, given that this is a gated subdivision, which would, I assume, require that whatever to develop to the north would also be a gated subdivision?
It would most likely, if they were to take access off of the internal private streets, they would need to get permission and be in compliance with that. And then they would be taking their access from the gated entryway on Hazel. So they would have to go through this in order to get to their property.
And so do we think that fire would sign off on that kind of arrangement?
They probably would need to provide adequate fire turnaround, so either a hammerhead or cul-de-sac.
Okay. Okay. I'll wait for the applicant.
Depending on how many lots would be proposed.
Thank you.
So the other thing I wanted to point out are lots 20, 25, and 26. They will have residences oriented so that the right elevation, which does contain fewer windows, is adjacent to the rear yard of properties to the south. And then also along the north property line, lots 10 and 4 will also be developed with single-story residences, and Lot 9 will have the residences, again, oriented so that the elevation with fewer windows would be adjacent to that north boundary. The entirety of the subdivision, you'll see a couple of different colored lines, will be, it will all be fenced with three different fencing materials. That just depends on the location and the need. So the western property line will have a six-to-eight-foot-tall masonry sound wall with columns, so that's the blue line along Hazel Avenue. And the remainder of the property will have a solid wood fence or a retaining wall consisting of masonry topped with solid wood. And then the drainage lot, which is outlined in green, will have open perimeter fencing. These are the elevations for the four home floor plans. So this is the single-family lot elevations. And then this is an example elevation for the half-plex. Here's the landscape plan. So there is enhanced landscaping proposed along the sound wall on Hazel Avenue. Front yard trees and drought-tolerant plants along the private streets are also Front yard trees and drought-tolerant plants along the private streets are also proposed. And just to touch on the drainage again, so the project will drain to the southeast corner of the property. The drainage lot is 7,760 square feet in size. From that drainage lot, it will then outfall into a storm drain system via an easement. And the Department of Water Resources has reviewed the drainage study and provided conditions of approval to ensure compliance with the county's floodplain management ordinance. So, to go over the different advisory meetings, so the Orangevale CPAC met on September 5th of last year with two members present, so a quorum was not established. 16 members of the public spoke in opposition to the project, so there were a number of concerns raised. But just to summarize, some of the concerns that were brought up were that the proposed RD 10 zoning was too dense for the surrounding area, that the fencing should be taller and a material other than wood. So, they recommended or discussed having a block wall or sound wall for the entire project boundary, not just along Hazel. Negative impacts on the quality of life and decreased property values. And neighbors were not in favor of the number of deviations being requested. They felt that they were asking for too many and that it was not consistent with the surrounding area. And the other comment was the project will exasperate an already dangerous and difficult traffic situation on Hazel Avenue. So, there were a number of people who indicated traffic on Hazel with high speeds and kind of an unsafe configuration, indicating that having more residences in this area will just increase that issue. And then, they also mentioned that it would be really difficult to turn onto Hazel from the proposed project, and that there's going to be some conflicts with the subdivision across Hazel Avenue to the west with people coming out at the same time. So, because there was no quorum, the CPAC members just provided, you know, stated again their opposition for the project and did not make a formal recommendation on the project and just provided those comments for your consideration. The Design Review Advisory Committee met on August 24th of last year. The DRAC members clarified that the roads were private and indicated that the greater density in smaller lots seemed warranted and that the special development permit request was appropriate for the development. So, they do recommend that the board find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. And then, the Planning Commission met on April 22nd of this year. There were no members of the public present. The Planning Commission did ask a number of clarifying questions, and they did ultimately recommend approval of the project with a five yes, zero no vote. They did express that the design of the project was consistent with surrounding densities, and the project was close to a major thoroughfare and was consistent with surrounding development. Leading up to this meeting, and I believe have been provided to you all, staff has received a number of comments in opposition that have been posted and provided. The comments expressed general frustration with the board hearing being downtown instead of in the Orangevale community, and there were some questionings on the public noticing for the project as well. We did review that. Noticing was reviewed by our board clerk and our county council and was determined to meet our government code requirements. So, just to summarize, the project does propose 23 single-family residences, 12 half-plex dwelling units, for a total of 35 residences on the infill site. The site access is sized appropriately to accommodate turning around at the entrance. Department of Transportation did review the project and concluded that a traffic study and signal improvements at the entrance was not warranted. Drainage will be adequately accommodated with the private drainage lot and the outfall to the storm drain system. And again, conditions have been included to ensure compliance with our floodplain management ordinance. The project design minimizes potential incompatibility issues, as I explained, going over the project development plan, having single-story and single-family homes around the perimeter and having the half-plex lots near the interior, and then orientation of those two-story homes as well so that there's less windows adjacent to residences. And then, through staff's analysis, we did determine that the project can be found consistent with the general plan, community plan, and that the rezone and community plan amendment are appropriate, and that the project proposes a range of housing sizes and types in the community consistent with the housing element and infill goals. So, with that, the staff recommends that the board determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to CEQA is adequate and complete, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt the resolution to amend the Orangevale Community Plan, approve the rezone ordinance, approve the tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, and special development permit subject to findings and conditions, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines subject to findings and conditions. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. We do have the applicants here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any more questions of staff before I invite the applicant up? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a statement?
Good morning, members of the board. Gregory Thatch, and I have been sworn, and I'm glad this came down. I was going to be in trouble. It's my pleasure to be here this morning representing J E L Development. Jim Loos, my client, is in the audience. He's the only other one with a vest on, and a little different color. And his partner, Jim McVeigh, is here as well as Jim's family. And we have Ken Baker, our civil engineer, if there are any questions that arise. It has been my privilege to represent Jim for somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 years. During that time, he has been exclusively an infill developer, a rarity, a difficult thing to do. He's developed approximately 36, 37 subdivisions, mainly in the Orangevale, Carmichael, Fair Oaks area. These have withstood the test of time. They're beautiful communities today, and they were back then. Infill is difficult. You all know it. You had a workshop on it not long ago to deal with all of the difficulties with infill development. But Jim gets it right. He's experienced, and he has it right. First of all, with respect to density, and Kimber, who did a great job, by the way, made it very clear that this is RD 10 zoning, but it's being built to just a little over 7 and 1/2 units to the acre. So, it's not this massive RD 30 that at one time was being talked about. Its location is right on a major corridor, exactly where we're supposed to be looking for infill opportunities. Traffic, you talked about the roads, Mr. Hume, that show may be cutting through. That is not our intention to have those roads cut through. The county may do something later that we can't control, but that is not the intention to have those cut through. And we see no traffic going through the adjacent neighborhoods as a result of that. I've also talked to DOT, and they've been very, very helpful. They're here today, and I appreciate that. But if you do have questions about safety, I think they're prepared to answer those. It is my understanding that they do not consider this an unsafe area, nor do they consider the inclusion of these units to create a difficult situation. I also think that Jim has done a pretty remarkable job in terms of placement of his single-story homes, so as not to intrude on neighborhood views. And when you look at those elevations of the side yards, you're really primarily looking at the bathroom with higher windows, so you do not have the kind of intrusion that you might otherwise have. I also want to emphasize the 12-half-plex lots, something that's very much needed in our county and doesn't exist to any significant degree, and I think that will be a great asset. We also have a gated community. You've seen in your pack at the design of the gate. It's quite attractive and meets all of the standards. There was some discussion about the deviations, and there are, but I would tell you, that's what you do in infill design. You have to try to find a way to make it work and fit, and that's what was done here, and it's very, very typical. And I know that staff has no objections. We have no objections to any of the conditions, and without, Mr. Chair, I would urge this board to approve what is an excellent project.
Thank you, Mr. Thatch. Any questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
All right.
Is there any public comment?
We do have public comment. Kareem, is this the right item?
Yes, right item this time. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Kareem Nujam, and I represent all the neighbors who could not be here today. At the September 2023 CPAC meeting in Orangevale, we had about 50 residents who strongly objected to rezoning the landing question from RD 5 to RD 10. Issues of safety, quality of life, and high-density projects that are already in our neighborhood were brought up. No vote was taken at the September CPAC meeting because there was no quorum, but we were assured that our objections would be taken into consideration, only to find out that the role of the county clerk is to record the objections and that it is up to the board to read them. So, my question is, were our objections taken seriously? Fast forward to April 2024. Another meeting was scheduled downtown at 5:30 p.m. Needless to say that with the short notice, about five working days, and the difficulty of most working people to attend at that set time, the community did not have the opportunity to share with the board the objections that had been voiced at the CPAC meeting. Thus, the recommendation to approve the upgrade sailed through, which is very fortunate for the developer. Two residents of Augustine Court communicated with the county clerk and Ms. Frost. They either got no answer or got some generic answers such as, "The process has been followed." The process may have been followed, but it was set in a way that it stripped our community from its voice because we were unable to attend. So, do not let the lack of attendance fool you, and I'm here to emphasize that the intensity of the objections remains unabated. There is this dark joke that goes, "A doctor meets the husband in the delivery waiting room and tells him, 'I'm sorry, sir, but we had to sacrifice the mother and the baby to save the operation. So, please do not sacrifice our community to save the process.'" Either vote no on the rezoning, or at the very least postpone the decision until our voices can be properly heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Frost.
Thank you. Thank you, Kareem, for coming here. I have received your emails. I have talked with one, I think, one other person over time regarding this project, which has been around for quite a while. And I've been briefed more than once by Planning and Department of Transportation, and also had meetings with the developer. And I guess I want to ask Todd Smith if you can speak, or Kimber, whoever wants to address it, if you can speak to the public process, because I was under the impression that there was a lot of work that the developer had done extensive work with the community to make alterations to the project and accommodate, you know, the single-story homes and the privacy concerns and so forth, and I wonder if you can speak to that?
Yes, Supervisor Frost, Todd Smith, Planning Director. I'll start by talking about the process, and then Kimber can speak to you any project-specific details. As indicated in the staff report and included in the board's package of materials, we do have all the public comments we received on this item, going back to the CPAC in September of last year. Obviously, we communicated to both the Planning Commission and the board the feedback that we received from the community, those folks who spoke in opposition. I think Kimber mentioned 16 or so who actually spoke. Obviously, there were a number greater than that at the CPAC. The CPAC, as you know, is an advisory body. It is not the final hearing body for the requested entitlements here, which include a community plan amendment and rezone. Those entitlements are acted upon by the Board of Supervisors, acting in this capacity following a recommendation by the Planning Commission. So, from staff's perspective, we have followed the appropriate process, going first to the CPAC, and then communicating to the Planning Commission what staff's analysis is, informed by the public feedback, looking at the transportation issues, drainage issues, et cetera, making sure that the hearing bodies along the way are appropriately informed of the community sentiment that we've received.
Were there any emails sent to Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the public comments are included that were received throughout the process are included as Attachment 7 to the board letter. And then, in terms of just kind of citing, so the, as Greg mentioned, and as I went over in my presentation, they are focusing on having single-story homes around the perimeter. So, those would be adjacent to the already-established single-family homes that are in the surrounding area. You know, there's always a concern about privacy with two-story homes and making sure that there is that accommodation there. And then, the ones that do have two-story, the windows are placed in a way where they're higher up. I do have on Attachment 5, Exhibit C, there, it would be the right-side elevation that would be facing the adjacent homes. So, there's, on this one, there's only three windows, and they're very small and higher up. Same with the right-side elevation. There's one window on the first story, and then again, three windows on the top, and they're kind of clustered in a way so that they wouldn't pose that much of a privacy issue. So, those were all kind of things that we heard at the CPAC meeting and that the property owner and the developer incorporated into their project to kind of try and address those concerns.
And in my communications, I had a sense that there were a lot of people very pleased with the compromises or the changes that the developer made along the way.
I didn't process this project, so I don't know specifically. Leanne may have had some conversations with people who have been pleased, but my understanding is that a majority of it was in opposition, just to the density of the project in general.
Okay. I'm sensitive to the community and your comments regarding that, but I'm also sensitive to that the overall goal of, you know, what we have in California is to encourage infill. And it's difficult to, these projects are difficult, but I'm very pleased with this project because of the way, the design and the way they've arranged the homes in a way to accommodate the outlying area and to be consistent with what's already there. I'm not concerned about the safety. There were some people who reached out concerned about the safety, but after a couple of meetings with Department of Transportation and planning, I'm not concerned about road safety on Hazel. And I think, given that the builder's been sensitive to, you know, they could have built even more, they're asking for RD 10 but building to RD 7. It seems like a nice project that fits well in the community, and I'm planning to support it. But I want to, you know, I want to say that I appreciate the developer and your work with the community to try and address their concerns around the project.
Supervisor Hume.
When the time comes, I'll move approval.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I have just a couple of questions for staff. I think in the, in your report, Kimber, you referenced the DWR conditions, and I don't remember which numbers you had in your staff report, but I believe they were incorrect.
Okay.
The DWR conditions are 66 to 82. But my question is, going back to this stub-out road, and I've raised objections about stub-out roads, assuming future development patterns previously, but I don't see anything in the DOT conditions that talk about putting up a barrier or anything that forecasts that this road would be connected to additional development in the future. And so, what I see that would happen with this development is that wood or masonry and wood fencing, they'll just continue, and now, not just the people living on that road, but now everybody living behind those gates will have this false sense of security, if you will, that they will live in their own gated community until such time as that property to the north potentially comes forward to develop and county staff conditions it to connect to that other roadway. So, just, these are things that are, again, they're presenting themselves for bigger headaches in the future, and I would just like to see us avoid those to the extent that we can. I see no reason why this couldn't be a standalone project that exists on its own. And that being said, Mr., is it Nujam?
Yes.
Nujam? You can take back to your clients that disapproving or not allowing this project, I think, would result in a less desirable outcome for the neighbors, because, as was mentioned, this site was on one of the sites that we were looking at to rezone to site was on one of the sites that we were looking at to rezone to multifamily-level density in order to meet our regional housing need allocation numbers. And so that would have been a much more intensive use. But if you were paying attention to the last item, even if we were to keep this at an RD five development, then either the developer, once the initial houses were built, and/or each of those individual homeowners could come in and have an ADU built by right, four feet off of property line, 16 feet in the air, with nobody having any say about it. And so, in fact, if we were to develop this in an RD five, we would essentially be allowing a more dense land use pattern than what this development is proposing. So I just, I don't want that to be lost in all of this, that the old way of sort of standing up for neighborhoods is being eroded. And I'm not in favor of it, but there is less and less that we can do from this dais to prevent it. And so this development, actually, I think, anticipates and locks in the most dense use that would ever be allowed, given the constraints of what remains on these plots. So it's not what they want, but it's about as good as they're going to get at this point. So I would second the motion.
Okay, thank you. I'll just say that, you know, as Supervisor Frost said, this is the direction that we are being told to head in, but it's also the good land use decisions to be made as far as infill development, which is very difficult. Mr. Defonte, I, you know, this took, this project, if I'm correct, took about two years to get through the process, and I'm hoping that your good work will result in what we've recently passed and will result in a process in which some process like this will not take two years, as we know time is money when it comes to these projects. So, thank you very much.
Supervisor Frost.
I'll go ahead and move staff's recommendation.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 73, approve the 2024-25 Transient Occupancy Tax Grant Program funding recommendations and authorize execution of grant agreements. Approve revisions to the Transient Occupancy Tax Grant Program allocation policy.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, board members. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and I'm here this morning to present on the Transient Occupancy Tax, or TOT, grant program. So as you know, the TOT grant program was approved in 2017, with 2024-25 representing the eighth year of the program that annually provides $1 million to nonprofit organizations for community-based programs and/or services in the county, with $500,000 of that designated for the highest-ranking applications, and then $500,000 designated for district discretion. So before we talk about the 2024-25 recommendations, and as the board actually requested at the last TOT presentation, I wanted to talk about some of the highlights from the previous funding cycle. So for the 2022-23 funding cycle, the county received 105 eligible applications with 70 applicants awarded, and overall was a very successful grant cycle with 97% of the TOT allocation expended, and 57 organizations having claimed and received 100% of their awarded amount. So looking at some of the highlights of some of the projects that were funded, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento received $41,000 for its Neighborhood Revitalization and Home Repair Program, and successfully completed three projects, leveraging the awarded funds to complete over $137,000 worth of repairs. Foster Hope Sacramento received $40,886 for the Creating Community Family and Youth Support Services Program, and served 30 youth and nine caregivers through the program, resulting in 2% increased placement stability. Department of Sound received $39,393 for the Sound Mind Initiative, and created six video modules to educate students and instructors on therapeutic music use to help students, with services provided to 16 schools and 540 students across two school districts. South Sacramento Interfaith Partnership Food Closet received $39,000 and used that to purchase a cargo van to pick up donated food, allowing it to continue to serve approximately 16,000 individuals every month. And Starting Point for Refugee Children received $7,000 to provide basic necessities to support 200 Afghan and Ukrainian children. And then, last but not least, Run-In for Rett received $12,500 to support a free after-school youth fitness program, with 4,962 kids registered for two races, and giving away 814 pairs of shoes. So as you can see, even some of what might seem like small dollar amount allocations really do result in a real impact through this program. So transitioning now to talk about the recommendations before you today for this 24-25 grant cycle. The application period for this cycle ran from February 2nd through 5 o'clock PM, and it was actually March 4th. I know the slide says March 12th, but it was, March 4th was the application period. And during that period, there was a workshop provided for potential applicants on February 13th. On that March 4th date, we, by that date, we had received 161 eligible applications that requested in aggregate 500, or, excuse me, 5.5 million in county assistance. And then you can see the breakdown in terms of the number of applications received by application category here at the bottom of the slide. The subject expert panels evaluated the applications in March and April of this year, and then the TOT Grant Review Panel met on May 3rd of this year to discuss the recommendations of the subject expert panels and then to determine the final funding. At that meeting, the panel also discussed the TOT policy adopted by the board on January 9th, which mandated that merit-based organizations take a year off before reapplying, and specifically, the panel discussed the administrative complexity and the confusion for the applicants of having different rules for merit versus district-directed funding, and we have a recommendation for the board regarding that. And just as a reminder, that panel is composed of Supervisors Desmond and Kennedy, and then the chiefs of staff from the remaining three districts. So a majority of that TOT Grant Review Panel agreed to recommend to the board what's before you today, so awarding $500,000 to the highest-ranking applications across the four categories, with the total per category based on the share of applications received, consistent with how we've done this in prior years. And then also to fund the applicant organizations at the amounts recommended by the subject expert panels. And then to award $500,000 or $100,000 for each district at each board member's discretion. And then finally, we do have this recommendation from the panel to revise the policy to essentially revert to allowing all organizations to apply annually, whether receiving merit or district funds. There's a few other recommendations before the board today, including the use of $865.46 of TOT Neighborhood Project Funds from District 1. That's essentially to ensure that the awards are whole-dollar amounts, which results in the total amount awarded for this program being $1,856.46. And then we are also recommending some clarifying language in that policy regarding prohibiting pass-through funding, as recommended by the grant consultant that we work with, Shelley So in terms of next steps, after board action, we will notify the applicants regarding approval of the awards and proceed with preparing the funding agreements. And then, all applicant organizations may request their application score and the subject expert panel notes at any time. And with that, the recommendations before you are displayed here, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none, do we have public comment?
We do have one public comment.
Thank you, Amanda.
Michelle.
I'm Michelle Benihoff. I'm with the Michael Ziegler Pride Industries Foundation. I wanted to thank you for your support in years past and this year for the I Am Able Employment Helpline. I'd like to tell a brief story about one of the people touched by the awards. So his name is Alex. He has a severe stutter, and he's a graduate from Sac State with the highest honors. He's late 20s and unable to get a job. He called the I Am Able Employment Helpline, which we applied the TOT grant awards to. And he interned in two communications positions to demonstrate his videography skills and his writing skills. He's now employed. What it really shows is being able to call a helpline and be placed into paid internships and/or directly be supported in the community for interns and receive the ability to demonstrate skill sets. It's really been an advantage to him. He's now a full-time employee, and he's just one of 5,000 callers over the timeline of the I Am Able Employment Helpline. So again, I just wanted to thank you all for supporting people with disabilities to gain employment in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Villanueva, I think you know where I'm following up with that one. This isn't about TOT, but I think that's testament to the county's need to up our game when it comes to finding opportunities for those with disabilities.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to be looking at the website right now.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Amanda, for the presentation and juror and staff's work on this. I think it was actually pretty smooth, this year, process, and I just wanted to thank Supervisor Kennedy, because it looks like District 2 is contributing to the Carmichael Improvement District. Is that correct on the chart here?
I believe that would be incorrect.
Oh, okay, all right. I thought it was an acknowledgement of the unique needs of the unincorporated areas, finally, but...
Only in the city.
But I, but I appreciate the work of staff, and I'm very supportive of this. I wish we had more resources to provide to so many of the wonderful nonprofits in Sacramento County, but I enthusiastically support this and would move approval.
And I will second. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just have a question, because one of the folks that submitted a grant funding request and was not recommended, they're just curious as to whether or not they were even in the right category. So for a, something that is education-related or literacy-related, would that fall under arts and culture, or would that be community development and services? Or...
So we generally rely on the applicant to self-select their category, and it relates to both the nature of the organization as well as the program that they are recommending. So your question was regarding literacy?
Sure. Elementary-school-based literacy program, they filed under arts and culture, and they think that maybe, given the panel expert, or expert panel composition, that perhaps they weren't in the right category.
Yeah, and your question is whether they should have been in community development and services?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that that may have been a better fit. Right, so as Chair is explaining, it is based on the project, but perhaps the best thing to do would be for us to reach out to this organization?
Sure.
And give them some feedback as to the appropriate category to apply to in the future.
And we have a good runway to do that before next year's round. Does this also lock down the district-based recommendation if I have something that I would like to change in light of this situation? Should I say that now, or is that up to me at a later date?
Yes, I would say that now, to amend the recommendation, because the board would be approving the awards for both the merit and the district-based.
Okay, and I do this, loving all of my children just the same, but I'd like to move $5,000 from the airshow and $3,000 from the Cordova Community Council, as far as the District 5 recommended. So airshow would go from 15 to 10, and community council would go from 10 to 7.
Excuse me, so airshow would go from 15 to 10, that's $5,000?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Cordova Community Council would go from 10 to 7, so that's $3,000. Combine those two for a total of $8,000 to the Sacramento Literacy Foundation. And let me complicate matters further. As a part of this, the application for the elementary schools they were going to do were not in District 5. They have identified a school in District 5 that they can, it's Abraham Lincoln Elementary, which ranks very high on the Title I list. Do we need to specify that if we're kind of going afield from what their actual application was?
I think that's something that we can work with your office on in terms of the direction of your district funds.
Okay. So we're clear as far as what we need to establish today?
So what I heard from you was the allocation for the airshow going from the $15,000 to $10,000, Cordova Community Council from $10,000 to $7,000, and then redirecting that $8,000 total to the Sacramento Literacy Foundation, and then we will work with your office on the use of that $8,000.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? All right, we do have a motion and a second, and the motion, maker of the motion includes the changes that Supervisor Hume, and the second does as well. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Hey, item 74 is your annual reports of the Housing Trust Fund, Affordable Housing Ordinance, Home Investment Partnerships Program, Permanent Local Housing Allocation, State Local Housing Trust Fund, and the City-City Affordable Housing Plan.
Good morning. Christine Weigert from SHRA. Today, I'll be reviewing SHRA's annual report on the county's affordable housing funding and activities. This, almost forgot my PowerPoint. This report covers two county ordinances, two state funding sources, and one federal source home funds. All are administered by SHRA for the calendar year 2023. This report also provides an update to the City-City Affordable Housing Plan. Overall, this annual report is one of the methods we use to ensure transparency during funding decisions. The county of Sacramento has two fee programs which benefit affordable housing, one on residential and the other on non-residential development. The revenues generated depend on the amount of building which occurs in any given year. The county Housing Trust Fund Ordinance authorizes collection of non-residential construction to fund very low-income housing projects. The Housing Trust Fund Ordinance was adopted in 1990, and to date has generated over $31 million plus $24 million in repayments from loans made with these funds, creating over 3,000 units with another 173 units under construction. In 2023, approximately $1.4 million in fees were collected. These fees generated are typically, excuse me, between $300,000 and $1 million annually. The Affordable Housing Ordinance fee on new housing units, and the goal is to increase the supply of affordable housing, $26.3 million, including $2.7 million in low repayments, have been collected since 2015, when the ordinance was last revised, creating 180 units with an additional units under construction. In 2023, over $4 million in fees were collected. Fees typically range between $1 million to $4 million annually. So together, in 2023, the county ordinances generated $5.4 million in local funds for affordable housing. Two state-of-California funding sources were received by the SHRA in 2023, the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program, or PLHA, and the state's Local Housing Trust Fund. The PLHA funds are generated through recording fees on real estate transactions, and 20% of the fees must be reserved for single-family down payment assistance and the remaining for multifamily affordable housing projects. In 2023, SHRA received the first allocation of these funds, $2.4 million, with additional funding expected this year. 122 units are currently under construction. The Local Housing Trust Funds are state-matching funds that are applied for on a competitive basis. Since 2020, SHRA has applied for and received $8.3 million on behalf of the county. $2.3 million of that was awarded in 2023, so creating 201 units. units with 145 units soon to be under construction. SHRA administers several federal grants on behalf of the county. Home funds are used for multifamily production and preservation. These funds have hard deadlines for expenditure, and it's critical that we identify eligible projects, so they were never in a position to return funds to the federal government. The county fund... The home funds generated in 2023 were $3.3 million, with $1 million in repayments of loan funds. There are currently three projects under construction utilizing home funds. So, the five funding sources I just reviewed total $13.3 million, with additional funds generated from loan repayments, which allow SHRA to reinvest in much-needed affordable housing. However, only projects that have the ability to make loan payments do so. Typically, permanent supportive housing projects do not have the ability to make payments, so they are structured as 0% interest loans due and payable at the term of the loan. Yep.
Go back to that last slide. Thank you. No, the other one.
Sorry. I'm going the wrong way.
Okay. I'll just ask my question.
Seriously, how do you go... Ah, down here. I found it. Sorry about that.
There we go. There's a couple of projects that are under construction and commitments.
Yes.
Why is that?
So, under construction means they are under construction to date. Commitments means the board has taken action to allocate those funds to the projects, such as recently, I think, just a few weeks ago, Tarasina at Wildhawk. They are still seeking other funding opportunities to make the project whole. So, they're applying for their tax credits and bonds, for example. So, we've committed the funds, but it's not yet ready to be under construction yet.
But what about, like, Sabre and Cornerstone?
Yeah, I saw that. I think that was a little confusing, because we added additional funds, as you recall, a few weeks ago, and so I think it got put in both categories. But really, both those projects are almost complete.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, as a reminder, SHRA's multifamily lending policies were adopted by the Board of Supervisors and govern all funding outlined in this report. Per the policies, SHRA administers and advertises funding availability two times a year. The amount of funds available to be advertised are advertised 30 days before the applications are due. And, for example, we'll be advertising the amount of funds available on July 1st for the August 1st application deadline. We will then notify developers within 30 days if their project has been selected for funding. All projects and funding amounts are posted on our website and presented to the Board of Supervisors for approval. So, the components of the applications are reviewed by various departments within SHRA who approve all construction operating aspects of the project. Additional criteria used when underwriting and reviewing funding include developer capacity and experience, project readiness, financing feasibility, leveraging of other funds, and location. And these are just a few of the criteria SHRA outlines in our 35-page lending policies. And I'm proud to say that our policies have been the model for other cities and the state housing finance agency. I'd also like to point out that the funding priorities approved by the Board of Supervisors are outlined in our lending policies. Number one is preservation of existing affordable housing at risk of losing affordability. And this is preservation of developments which are currently publicly subsidized, but at risk of losing affordability restrictions due to sale, termination, or public subsidy reductions. In other words, without our involvement, the affordable housing units will be lost. But unfortunately, the county does not currently have many of these at-risk projects, which means the second funding priority, new construction of homeless housing, has become our focus.
Supervisor Desmond?
Oops. Sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Christine. And excuse my ignorance, I guess. With the... These funding sources, particularly the Trust Fund and the Affordable Housing Fund, these are... All of those funds are exclusively administered by SHRA for SHRA-related projects? Is that true?
The Housing Trust Funds and the Affordable Housing Funds are administered by SHRA. There is one funding source that I went through, the Permanent Local Housing Allocation. It's a state resource, PLHA. That actually is collected by the county of Sacramento, and the county has funded some of the other cities, I believe Folsom, Ileton, and Galt, and funds some of their own projects and priorities before they remit the remainder to SHRA.
Okay. Okay. And the reason I ask, because we are, obviously, the county doing everything we possibly can to attract more housing across the continuum. We get approached by a lot of affordable housing developers coming directly to my office, for instance. But I'm just curious if any of those local funding sources would be available for the county to do... If the county is working with an affordable housing developer, and it's not an SHRA project, would the county have access to those funds for that purpose? Or would they... Would it only be through an SHRA project?
I think that development could be referred to SHRA. We follow the ordinances that were approved for the use of the funds, and we do generally follow the underwriting criteria. But anyone could... If there was a county's project that wanted SHRA to use those funds, we would absolutely consider it.
Okay. We'd have to make sure that's allowed in the ordinance. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, just to continue, the funding priorities after preservation, there is new construction or conversion of non-residential to residential use. And there's a priority under that. First, as I said, permanent supportive housing and homeless. Second, workforce housing. Third, veterans, and then all other projects. But it is important to note the policy states that within each category, applicants with deep affordability are given preference. Number three is recapture of exist... I'm sorry, recapitalization of existing affordable housing, which includes substantial rehabilitation. And four, rehabilitation of market-rate housing into affordable housing. But since the adoption of these policies, we've not often reached the funding priorities in number three or four. So, the city and county of Sacramento entered into a partnership agreement in 2022 to improve coordination on homeless activities. The agreement required the preparation of an affordable housing plan. The affordable housing plan was developed with community input and approved by the Board of Supervisors and the City Council in October 2023. The two sections make up the plan: permanent supportive housing and rehousing. So, for permanent supportive housing, the measurable target is to create 300 units of permanent supportive housing and 100 units of affordable housing annually. In 2023, that goal was exceeded by creating 372 units of permanent supportive housing and 262 units of affordable housing. Other goals, such as updating zoning, developing new partnerships, and others are in various stages of implementation, as outlined in the report. For rehousing, the goal is 220 new rehousing slots per year and 29 full-time case managers. The GAPS analysis, identification of funding needs and resources, is underway to meet this goal, in addition to estimating or establishing a performance matrix and other analysis. So, with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available, as others are here in the audience, to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Seeing, hearing done. Do we have a public comment?
Do not have any public comments.
Okay. This is a receive and file. Thank you very much, Christine. Next item, please.
For item 75, this is the 2025 One Year Action Plan Federal Program Allocation Process and Consolidated Plan Workshop.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Green. I'm the Federal Programs Manager at SHRA. Today's presentation is the Second Workshop for the 2025 Annual Action Plan and the Five-Year Consolidated Plan for Federal Block Grants administered by SHRA on behalf of the county. The action plan and consolidated plan process started with workshop number one in February, and following that, SHRA received project ideas from county staff and reviewed them for readiness and eligibility. The purpose of today's workshop will be to present a draft list of potential infrastructure and public facility projects for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, funds in the 2025 Action Plan, and also receive input on those and any new ideas for activities. Before we discuss the action plan, I'll provide an update on the five-year consolidated plan process. As we discussed at workshop one, SHRA is in the process of updating its consolidated plan, which is a HUD requirement for the receipt of federal housing and community development block grants. The consolidated plan covers a five-year planning period and identifies community needs and establishes long-term strategy to meet those needs. That strategy informs the annual action plans over the next five years. Currently, SHRA is working with a consultant, Root Policy, to undertake community engagement to identify priorities in the consolidated plan. As part of this community engagement, SHRA held a public hearing at the Second Workshop at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission on May 15th. Root Policy has also been administering stakeholder focus groups and planning pop-ups or tabling at local community events, focusing primarily on low-to-moderate-income areas. The community events will wrap up around mid-July. In addition, a community and stakeholder community need survey has been released, which will be open until June 30th. The QR code on the current slide provides a link to that survey. It's geared towards both residents and also individuals working in the fields of housing and community development. We encourage everyone to share this survey with friends, family, and coworkers. Everyone who participates in the survey is entered to win a $100 Visa gift card. The draft consolidated plan will be finalized by August, and there will be a 30-day comment period starting mid-August. The plan will be then revised, based on any comments received, and the final plan will be adopted in October, along with the 2025 Action Plan. For the 2025 Action Plan, we've estimated the CDBG allocations and identified a proposed list of projects for funding. This slide shows that we anticipate about $7 million in CDBG funding available in 2025 for the county. The CDBG funds are allocated among the various programs shown here. Generally, we reserve about 15% of the entitlement for public services, which is the maximum we can allocate for public services, and about 20% for grant planning and admin. From there, we work backwards to identify available funds for public facilities and housing projects. About $1.75 million will be going to housing programs, and about $2.8 million to infrastructure and public facilities projects.
What's considered a public service?
So, those are like our shelters, rapid rehousing, Meals on Wheels. Those are public services programs that we generally fund.
Okay. Thank you.
This slide shows the draft list of projects for the 2025... I'm sorry. Let me go back. You asked about public services or public facilities?
Services.
Services. Okay. That was correct. Sorry. So, this slide shows the recommended draft list of projects for the 2025 Action Plan, and all projects listed here have been assessed for eligibility and readiness. These projects include Phase III of the Fruitridge Sidewalk Improvements Project, a basketball court at Old Florentine Park, Stockton Boulevard Complete Streets Design, a basketball court at Rutter Park, North Watt Avenue Street Improvements, Wideaway Sidewalk Infill, Gibson Ranch ADA Improvements, and additional funds to complete the Walnut Grove ADA Restrooms Project. In addition, we always set aside some funds for environmental review of projects. And finally, this slide shows an overview of the action plan and consolidated plan process moving forward. As mentioned, this is a draft list of projects, and over the next couple of months, we will continue to meet with county staff as needed to refine this list. Then, in October, we return to you with a final list of projects for approval, before returning to both the city and county for final action plan approval. Currently with the action plan, as men... Or, I'm sorry, concurrently with the action plan, as mentioned, we'll be conducting community outreach for the consolidated plan, which is finalized in August and adopted in October, along with the action plan. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. Obviously, I understand what administration is, but walk me through the $1.18 million that is identified for grant planning and admin. It is less than the 20% allowed, but that's still a pretty significant number.
Yeah. So, we set that aside for staff administration. There's not a whole lot that goes into the planning. If we have a project that wants to undertake, like, a master plan or a planning activity that doesn't necessarily have funds identified for actual construction, sometimes we'll put those in the planning category. We don't have any of those this year, so it's primarily for staff administration of the program.
And so, again, I'm not questioning necessarily the work that's being done. I just want to have a better idea of that workload, because you obviously chose a very specific number in that you didn't go to the full 20% maximum. So, what in these lists... You know, you talked about what's under public services. You gave us a list of the public facility improvements. Obviously, the housing development, preservation, and homeownership, those... That's a little more nebulous. So, what... Walk me through what we're buying with that grant planning and admin line item.
Yeah. As mentioned, it's mostly for staff administration. We base that based on previous years, how much we've spent on grant planning and admin. We don't always need to go to the maximum 20%. So, if we need a little bit extra to cover some infrastructure projects, or we want to put a little bit more in housing, and we feel that's necessary, sometimes we'll make those adjustments. But generally, it's based on what we've identified in previous years as what's needed.
The other thing, if I could just chime in a little bit, is that this is... This is the year where we do the consolidated plan, so the five-year plan. So, also paying for the consulting services, that's going to be doing all that outreach and root policy.
Yeah.
So, all of those are also calculated into the administration. So, that's why the number, like you said, is more exact, because we're looking at all of the other items that we're going to need to not only just do our normal CDBG-related activity, but also the five-year consolidated planning activity that HUD requires.
So, given that consideration, would it be safe to say in a non-consolidated-plan year that this line item would be lower?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Second question. Talk to me about the Agreement Cities. It's Folsom, Ileton, and Galt, which are the oldest incorporated cities in the county. What... I got to assume Folsom gets its own CDBG money.
Yes. So, we administer the CDBG on behalf of Folsom, Ileton, and Galt, which is... That's why we call them Agreement Cities. So, they each receive a certain entitlement amount, and we administer that funding on their behalf.
So, this line item, again, goes back to staff time to administer their CDBG programs. It's not necessarily our CDBG money being spent on those cities.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. One question. On the CDBG, when you're making determinations, and I know you do this consultatively with the districts, but do you take into account specifically whether or not it's an environmental justice community?
We do not. Not currently, no.
Okay. Thank you. We might want to. So... Any other questions? All right. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
So, for item 76, you're acting as the housing authority of the county of Sacramento. This is the Housing Choice Voucher Program update.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Mary Liz Paulson, and I'm the Director of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And today, I'm going to give you an update on this program. Part of managing the Housing Choice Voucher Program is consistently monitoring the number of households receiving assistance, those families with vouchers looking for a unit, and those families coming into and out of our jurisdiction, and balancing all of this with the funding that is available. In February, HUD contacted us to let us know that we wouldn't have funds available to cover all of the families leasing up if the continued trends that are going upward continue. This was no surprise. Typically, HUD funds the Housing Choice Voucher Program and has funds available to cover this. However, nationally, the rents have been increasing, and we have learned that we were not alone. Housing authorities throughout the country were struggling with the increased rents. So, this is really a national issue as well, although it's heavily felt in California. Our projections differed from HUD somewhat, but we had come to the same conclusions as we look at the number of families that are receiving subsidies and the amounts of those subsidies. We began meeting with HUD monthly to review various data points, such as the number of families with vouchers, those that are moving, those that are ending their participation, and again, those numbers change daily. HUD determines the fair market... HUD determines the fair market rent values, and this increased from $1,072 in 2022 to $1,600 in 2024 for a one-bedroom unit. And you can see that's an increase of 55% in those intervening years. We responded right away to our meetings with HUD by making some following policy changes. We issue a voucher typically for 120 days and then provide 160-day extension for a total of 180 days or six months. So, families that receive a voucher have six months to find a unit, and our research, both ours and nationally, show that families are most successful in leasing up a unit, finding a unit within those six months. Because we were anticipating a funding gap at the end of the calendar year, HUD directed us to begin making changes right away in the first quarter of 2024 in order to get the maximum benefit of these changes. So, in March, we sent out notices to voucher holders. Those are families that have a voucher either to move or because they're coming in new to the program, letting them know that if they requested an extension on their voucher, we would give them an extension of 60 days. That means families had at least six months to find a unit. Many families had already had their voucher for longer than that, because during the pandemic, we were not expiring the vouchers. In May, we saw an influx of RIFTAs. RIFTA is a term that we use. It's an acronym. It stands for Request for Tenancy Approval. This is, I like to say, is kind of the marriage document between the tenant who has the voucher and the family who has the unit that is available for rent, the landlord. So, in May, we saw an influx of the number of these RIFTAs that had come in. In fact, our number in May was higher than it's been before. So, we are seeing that families who had vouchers, who were receiving these notices, were out looking for units and were successful in finding units. They're bringing back to us to process so that their assistance can continue. Yes, sir?
Specifically on the RIFTA, you know, I've been participating in the ostensibly inside of the four-by-two on these issues, on the vouchers, in these conversations. On the RIFTA, are we communicating...or you, I'm sorry, are you communicating with the city and the county the status of our RIFTAs on a regular basis, like which, how many have been submitted, denied, pending, or approved? Is that data that you're providing with the city and county now?
It has not been. It has not been requested. No, we have not been providing that on a regular basis.
Okay, it has been requested now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, sure. So, in May, as I mentioned, we saw more RIFTAs submitted than we have seen previously in '23 or '24. When we began notifying voucher holders of the vouchers expiring, we had identified 175 families that, based on the service providers they were working with, we anticipated that they were homeless prior to getting the voucher. And so, that was our particular focus in providing services and tracking them. I've been meeting with the city, the county, and Sacramento Steps Forward, and we're working together to identify voucher holders who are at risk of homelessness so that we can reach out to these families and provide services. SHRA staff is actively contacting these families so that we can refer them for additional services. I'll speak more about that 175 families a little bit later. We are also not expiring the voucher right away. We are reaching out to families in anticipation of the voucher expiring and looking at where they're at in their housing search process and extending time on their voucher as needed. So, the second activity that we put into place is addressing our project-based voucher program. Within the Housing Choice Voucher Program, we have tenant-based vouchers and we have project-based vouchers. Project-based vouchers are where we make a commitment to keeping that unit filled. We work with the property owner and make those units available for families to move into. Typically, we issue a request for proposals on an annual basis. We don't have additional funds at this point, so we are not issuing an additional request for proposal. However, we have many voucher units that are coming online this year based on previous year's commitments. So, we are leasing up about 300 new units this year. In addition to that, there is always turnover, so we have about 3,000, just less than 3,000 project-based voucher units throughout the county that we are continuing to keep leased up as there is turnover.
Okay, a couple of questions from the board. I'll start with on that issue, on the project. Why are we not adding more when we have expired vouchers? I mean, wouldn't it be easier for the vouchers to be used if we had more project-based vouchers? I mean, it alleviates the need to go out and all these one-offs and for the people who hold the voucher to identify where. Wouldn't it be easier from an administration standpoint to increase the number of project-based vouchers?
So, no for two reasons. Firstly, because the issue is that we don't have funding right now, so there isn't the funding to be able to support additional project-based vouchers. So, that's the first answer. The second answer is the way that project-based vouchers work, and this is addressed in another slide as well. But when a family is living in a project-based voucher unit and they choose to move, they can do that after 12 months, and they can request a tenant-based voucher if a voucher is available and move, and it converts to a tenant-based voucher. So, every time someone who is in a project-based unit moves out, the program grows as well. And remembering that the issue here is that we don't have the funding to do that.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
Okay, so how many project-based vouchers do we have?
We have about 2,700 and adding all the time, so...
And how many tenant-based vouchers?
We have...the total number for tenant-based vouchers includes our project-based vouchers, and we have over 13,000.
13,000, okay. And just so I'm...so tenant-based voucher stays with the individual, project-based voucher stays with that?
Exactly.
Unit, that's the...okay.
Exactly.
Make sure I understand it.
Good.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. This may be covered in the later slides, so I'll try and keep my questions brief. But so, as I understand it, there's a cap of 13,500 vouchers, total of which only 30% can be project-based?
That's correct.
And so, then, when a project-based voucher, when that...if that person moves out and it converts to a tenant-based voucher, does that project-based voucher still stay with that project?
Yes.
Okay, so that is literally a growth of the system, or of the program, rather.
Correct.
And so, and this is...I may be jumping ahead here, but of the amount that we will receive, a little over $185 million, how many vouchers does that represent?
Currently, we have over 12,000 vouchers, so that we are able to lease with those funds.
And so, again, I apologize if you're going to get to this, but do we know what that shortfall is between what we are being allotted and what the total amount needed would be to fully fund the program?
So, the way that it works is HUD gives us a certain number of vouchers, as you mentioned, and the dollars, and you lease up the maximum that you can so that you don't exceed either one. So, in this case, we will lease up using all of the dollars available before we get to that 13,000.
And that's a very difficult thing for you to forecast, given that that voucher does not have a stated value. It's whatever the gap is between their income and the rent that's being charged.
Exactly. In addition to that, it depends on market, so you're right. There are all sorts of factors that come into play in doing those projections.
Okay, that's all for now, thank you.
Sure.
Continue, please, thank you.
Okay. So, number two, we stopped adding units to project-based vouchers, so we're not issuing RFPs, and we're not allowing those contracts that we currently have with project-based vouchers. They can ask to increase the number within that contract, and we're not doing that right now for the reasons already stated. So, number three, we have stopped issuing new vouchers and stopped issuing new applications. Now, when we met with HUD, there are some exceptions to that. We can continue to issue vouchers for VASH, which is the Veterans Affair in Support of Housing Program, and for the Foster Youth to Independence Initiative and Shelter Plus Care. So, there are a couple of exceptions where we are continuing to lease up. Number four, we are following HUD's guidance, and we are stopping to issue tenant-based vouchers to project-based voucher families who are wanting to move, and we just talked about how that happens. So, a family who is wanting to move out of a project-based unit typically request a tenant-based voucher, we have it available, and they move. Right now, where we don't have tenant-based vouchers available, they can move if they choose to without assistance, and then, once we have vouchers available, then they will go to the top of the list, and we will be offering them a voucher to pick up the assistance at that point. So, we have been communicating that with our families who are living in project-based voucher units. And number five, we will continue to monitor the situation and our funding and work with HUD as we continue for the remainder of the year. It's important to note that the funds that are made available for the Housing Choice Voucher Program are approved by Congress. It's an annual amount, so this is covering...my presentation today is covering what we are anticipating for 2024. 2025 is a new year with new budget, new allocation coming from Congress. So, as we have implemented these changes, we've been working with our community stakeholders and voucher holders and so on in the effort to maintain communication and transparency. We've hosted meetings, we've set out email blasts, and we've sent out letters. The focus really is communicating first and primarily with our participants and applicants and the service providers that are working with them. So, and then, as I mentioned additionally, with the project-based voucher sites. So, we were notified in May that we received $185 million in allocation for 2024. Congress approved the budget in March, and then HUD has 60 days after that to notify housing authorities of their particular allocation. So, there is a mistake on the slide, and I want to make a correction. There is actually $200 million available nationally to help housing authorities with shortfalls and with other fund requests. So, there are seven categories for which housing authorities can ask for additional funds, and the first priority is to help if there is a budget shortfall. So, we actually have already submitted the application for additional funds.
Excuse me, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So, that slide there then goes back to the question I was asking earlier, as far as what is that budget shortfall, or how much did we ask for in addition?
So, the way that it works, you don't ask for a specific dollar amount, but we're working with HUD, and we're continuing to assess what that shortfall may be, and HUD will continue as we get close to that shortfall, at least based on the past. They will fund that to keep us so that we are not over-expending the amount of funds or spending more than the funds that we have available. So, at this point, projections are changing. We are running projections. Normally, we run projections about once a month. Right now, we're running them every other week or weekly and really continuing to look at the data that we have available. So, our projections at this point look like we're about between $4 and $6 million is has been our best guess. Again, that changes all the time based on our projections, and as there's a lot of fluidity in the number of families and where they're moving and how much we're paying for subsidy. So, we will be in line for the funds, and we are working with HUD. There is a particular team that has been identified to work with us that are looking to make sure that we are able to continue to support the families who are counting on us to pay rent.
And so, okay, that's good to know. So, we have a little over $185 million identified. You're saying a little over $190, $191 million is the number that would need to fully fund the program. For those families that aren't quote-unquote "funded" right now, they're eligible and just don't have a voucher allocated to them, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, I meant...any other questions? So, I mentioned earlier that there were about 175 families that we had identified in May, and we've identified them and are tracking them as they go through the process to lease up. So, of those 175, about 30 have actually leased up, 80 have RIFTAs in process, and we have about 50 in round numbers that still have active vouchers that we are working with to help find units so that they can lease up with the voucher that they have.
Do we know how many of those 80 have actually we've been able to contact? Because sometimes people move out of the area or something like that. I mean, are we aware of the percentage of those people we've actually made contact with?
We're continuing to make contact. We're not giving up at the first call, so we're still making frequent...we have not...we've not given up on anybody at this point, so...
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Supervisor Desmond.
And just to follow up to that, what's the timing looked like? I mean, how much time do we have with these 175? They don't all expire at the same time, correct?
Exactly. They don't expire all at the same time. So, we started working with the families as of mid-March, so the first of those groups of that 175, their vouchers would have expired in mid-May. And so, it'll take about four months, 120 days, to go through all of those, because they all were issued vouchers at different time periods. Okay, as I mentioned, the RIFTAs are coming in, and we saw more come in in May than we had seen in the previous two years, so that's good. That means families are finding units and submitting the paperwork so that we can get the subsidy started. We've added information on our website with educational videos showing people how they can look for a unit, how they can do the calculations before they submit the RIFTA to see if the unit is approvable by staff who are processing the RIFTAs. We also are working with the community partners, as I mentioned, to identify additional resources and bring these to the families who are looking for units.
Okay, I'm going to ask the same question I ask of our staff all the time, and that's...so we have this information on the website, how do people know about it?
So, folks who are working with us know to look at the website. We also have a portal where we are interacting. They can contact us that way. Folks are calling in, they're coming into the office, so we did email blasts, we did letters as well, so we're using multiple ways to reach out to the folks who have vouchers, who are in this...kind of in this process.
So, we're focusing on those with vouchers, not necessarily people in need of vouchers but don't have them?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So, in conclusion, we're talking today about there being an insufficient amount of funds to be able to provide support to all of the families who are...who have vouchers in process, and how we are working together to manage those and help them lease up, and then stopping families who are in need of vouchers, who either have started the process, haven't completed, or are still on the waitlist and have not been able to be pulled off to offer a voucher. We are focusing on keeping families housed. That is our priority. We are working to follow HUD's direction so that we can be in compliance. That makes us eligible to receive additional funds, and we will continue to monitor the situation and make adjustments as we need to as we go through 2024. That's the end of my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Supervisor Desmond.
Okay, thank you. So, can you tell me...give me a little more information about how you're working with our county staff on this population and what other...and possibly county staff can respond to this as well, what resources, what steps the county is taking in conjunction with the SHRA to get these folks housed with their voucher?
Yeah. My first answer is we're working with the service providers. Many of the...most or all of the service providers have contracts with the county, and the service providers are working with the families who are moving from homelessness to being housed. homelessness to being housed. And so we have included those service providers as third parties. So as we reach out to the families, the service providers are getting the same notification. In addition to that, we have been working to create a release of information so that we can share more specific and more personal information about the families who are receiving the vouchers, who are looking for units, so that we can share that information with the county and with city staff so that we can identify the barriers. At this point, we have been working as we identify families who need the services, we're making those referrals. And while the family is with us, then we're getting those releases of information signed. So that's a fairly new process.
Okay. And first, I want to say this, you know, I appreciate Supervisor Kennedy, our Chair, participating, I know, in multiple meetings with SHRA and the City Sacramento and county staff and Sacramento Steps Forward, so want to, just call that out. But I'd like to hear maybe from Siobhan, either from Siobhan or Emily, how that process is going, just how the communication, the coordination, and the information sharing is going with SHRA. Because obviously, we have a huge role in trying to get these folks, the unsheltered folks, connected with the resources they need.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. So, you know, I think this situation, which is certainly a crisis for our community, has led to some good opportunities for us to identify some areas that we can strengthen in terms of the partnership. And so the city, the county, SHRA, and SSF have all been at the table over the last several months to have these discussions about how we can improve those processes. So to Mary Liz's point, we're working on a better data and information sharing process so that as folks come into our system, similar to how we're trying to develop, develop a social health information exchange, how can we work together at the outset with our providers and with our entities to ensure that folks have a smoother pathway to utilizing their vouchers and getting the supports necessary? Also, case conferencing is one of those things where we haven't historically done that. And what we've realized is that the folks who are holding vouchers and have been holding them for some time probably have had a difficult time leasing up because of their overall capacity to do that. And so we're implementing some new processes around case conferencing, how our teams get together to share information on behalf of working with folks. And then SHRA, in a previous meeting that Supervisor Kennedy discussed, we did talk about sort of mapping out that process so that it was clear to both the community, to our providers, how folks flow through the system, what those priority points are, how do they access services? And not in all cases will it be SHRA providing those sort of hand-holding or wraparound services, but there will be smoother, warm handoffs and transitions. So I think as a result of this process, we are developing some better tools and some better partnerships so that we can help our community better.
Thank you, Siobhan. I know there was one other hurdle to overcome and you just made reference to it, the information sharing, because I think it's a, there's some confidentiality issues with people who actually are a voucher holder and allowing, you know, providing that information to the county. Can you describe what that is and what progress you're making in terms of breaking down that barrier?
Yes. So we have, we have created a release of information. And as of Friday, I received an additional, I received a list of agencies to be included. The way it was, it was a blank where the tenant or the participant could identify the service providers that they wanted us to share information with. Based on this partnership, we have identified not only the city, the county, and Sacramento Steps Forward, but several service providers that will be working on this multidisciplinary team. So those are actually called out on this release of information. Then the family, the voucher holder will be asked to sign to give us permission to share that with the service providers. They will also have the option of adding to that list of service providers if there's someone that they're working with that's not included. So we're working today to create a power form, which has been very effective for us so that as we are working with families, we can send them an email, they can access on their phone, and then they can electronically approve and sign that while we walk them through the process, if that's necessary, in addition to making that available through paper. Through paper, as you know, we'll send it out, it takes time to go through the mail, they fill it out, takes time to come back. If we can help people navigate that electronically, we have it immediately, which allows us to then work together and shorten that time period. So we're anticipating sending out that information this week so that we can notify all of the folks who are needing information that with this release of information, we can help make that referral.
Okay. I just, I sure hope that doesn't prevent us again, from getting the help to someone who needs it.
Right.
And then when are we, we have a work, another workshop or something with SHRA? Will that be, is that going to be about this and some of the other? Remind me, Michelle, what the scope of that is going to be? I'm assuming we'll get a report back on this issue as well at that workshop.
Absolutely. That workshop is scheduled for August 6th. And that one, we will actually go into detail, really kind of talking about Affordable Housing 101 and addressing some of the questions that came up with the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program.
Okay.
But really, it goes to the bigger picture of SHRA and how we are maintaining our physical assets, so all of those public housing units that we own, operate, and manage, where we are the owner, and how we are putting together the strategic process and methodically working through and what that all entails. So that's one huge component of that workshop. And then we'll continue to give updates on the Housing Choice Voucher Program as well in terms of where we are.
That's great. Thank you. And I would hope at that workshop as well helped me have a better understanding of how SHRA is working with our own county planning staff on both SHRA projects and maybe other projects that the county is involved in without SHRA. I'd like to understand that better because I do, I do think I mentioned this earlier in one of the other presentations, is how we are hearing a lot more about, I mean, we're trying to get more affordable housing developers involved and interested and clearly, you know, not every one of them will be going through SHRA. So I just want to have a better understanding of how, you know, how the county is, what the county's doing to attract affordable housing and how they're working with or maybe working exclusive of SHRA, but hopefully complementing each other's efforts, so.
Yes, absolutely. And in the few, in the past, what we have done is there are obviously developers who come through the process that Christine was talking about and make that application that we do twice a year. But we've also been very actively engaged over the years in more county-directed or city-directed projects that were priorities identified that really elevated. And we received additional money, especially through the American Rescue Plan funding. But a lot of the work that we did on Stockton Boulevard, if you'll all recall, all of those different units that are coming online, that was all done as a result of establishing that as the priority and being able to designate the funding so that we could move very, very fast and get those done. So it's not an or, it's an and.
Right.
And, you know, we just take our direction from both the board as well as the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I want to reemphasize what Supervisor Desmond was talking about as far as that sharing of information and how important that is. I mean, we, you know, the vouchers in particular and SHRA in general has to play a role in our overall effort to get people off of the street and get them into housing. That can't happen if we don't have that data sharing. And we can't have, we can't afford to have SHRA doing their own thing over here while we've got all these efforts. And I'm talking on behalf of the city as well as the, as the county. So, you know, thank you for bringing that up. One question I have, because we, I'm sure that my colleagues do as well, get calls of complaints regarding how long it takes for the inspections to take place. Now, SHRA, I believe, committed to expanding the capacity of their existing contractors. Have you done that? How's it going? And what is the, is, what's the goal timeframe for an inspection to occur?
Yeah. So we have, we have worked with our contractor, you're right, to be able to respond with enough staff on their part to respond timely. And we're not seeing that that's a delay. We are bringing in additional staff and working to be able to shorten that time period. There are all sorts of factors that play into how quickly the inspection can be scheduled. There's a process before we ever get to the inspection. When the RIFTA comes in, we're looking to see that the owner is in fact the legal owner of record, so we're verifying that. We're verifying the amount of rent that the landlord is charging, making sure that that's reasonable and comparable, given the community. We're going through and making sure that all of the information that were needed so that we can protect the tenants who are, who are looking for a place to rent are actually getting a place that is legally, they have the right to legally rent. Once that happens, then we determine that the unit is ready for inspection, we reach out to the landlord. Now, many landlords, and if you're a property manager, you start looking for a replacement tenant as soon as your current tenant gives notice. So the unit is not necessarily vacant or ready to be inspected when the RIFTA comes in. And so most, many of the, much of the time, the landlord, when we call to set up an inspection, will say, it's not ready yet. Can I schedule a date out? And we'll go ahead and we'll work with the landlord, of course, when the unit is available. So, and then when the unit is inspected, there are various reasons why it may not pass. It may not be the first inspection. Sometimes the landlord is not able to find a staff person who can be present, who can give us access to the unit even though we notify them in advance. And so there's delays, the unit may not pass inspection. So there are all sorts of factors that play into when, how much time it takes between when the RIFTA comes in and when the unit passes inspection and we can move forward.
Okay, so, but, so you're, you know, when we get those calls, those aren't the circumstances we're getting those calls for. It's when we have, you know, literally somebody waiting on a, and so I guess, is there a, and a lot of, I don't want to tell you how to do your job, you guys are the experts on this, but a lot of what you said to me can, doesn't need to take a great deal of time. I mean, we're in the computer age.
Right. So, so a couple of things. One is the tenant may not be aware of any of this. So when the RIFTA comes in, we're working with the landlord. We are working to, and we're in the process of launching a communication mechanism so that we can more adequately communicate with the tenant as well as the landlord when there are delays or when the inspection is scheduled. The tenant usually doesn't know that because the tenant is not the, the tenant at that point. It's a vacant unit that they have no, no legal right to. We coordinate with the landlord to get that inspection. So we are in the process of launching a way where we will be notifying the tenant when the inspection has been scheduled as well. So, and that at least will give some more visibility, more transparency, and answer some of the questions and fears that tenants have when they don't have that information.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, do we have public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. This is a receive and file. We have received and now we will file. Thank you very much. And that takes us to our break. We do have an item on closed session and we will reconvene at 2:00. Okay, we'll call the Board of Supervisors meeting back to order. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Yes, good afternoon. Supervisors Desmond, Frost, Hume, Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Next item.
Okay, for item 77, I do have a title correction and I'll read that into the record. George Hill's Company Incorporated Annual Report for Fiscal Year Ending 2022-23.
Okay, let's, for the record, there was nothing to report out of closed session.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairperson Kennedy, members of the board. This is my opportunity to once again kind of give you the highlights and lowlights of the 2022-23 fiscal year. As I was standing up there waiting for this to start, Dave Villanueva came up to me and said, so you probably have good news this year. And I said, no, not really. But it's not all that bad.
You're not in the business of good news, are you?
You know, Supervisor, I'm glad you said that and I'm going to address that a little bit further on in this, in this presentation. So the slides that we're going to review show a total increased cost of the program by 29%. The majority increase was due to the 83% increase in new claims that were entirely due to the heavy winter that we experienced or almost entirely as a result of the heavy winter we expected in the winter-spring of '20 and '23. So if you look at slide number one, it breaks down the total individual costs associated with each category of expense. There are fees that we charge the county to investigate and handle the claims, attorney's fees and costs, which are the four defense firms that handle your litigation for you, and the claim payments that are made. And if you look at the percentages, as you will see, George Hill's fees, you know, vary by 2% from year to year. The attorney's fees actually, by a percentage of the overall total, went down, even though they went up in terms of what was actually paid. And claim payments went up significantly and I will indicate why that is in just a moment. So this is the increase-decrease by year for the last three years. And as you will see, George Hill's fees, it's about time they went up, went up by 73%. They have always remained pretty constant over the last six, seven years. They are always in the, well, 600, call it 625, 597, and then up to $1 million. Good reason for this, our claims almost doubled. We traditionally handle between 550, 575 claims a year. This year, they were over 1,000. You'll see that in a moment. Almost all weather-related. I mean, we got 241 pothole claims alone. You have pothole claims, you have windstorm claims with trees coming down, you have flooding on roadways, roadway accidents. So I can't give you a precise percentage, but I can guarantee you that almost all of it was due to a, almost a doubling of our claims that we received. Most of claims don't involve litigation, most of those claims, because they're relatively minor. So the attorney's fees and costs did not change substantially in terms of the percentage, but the increase in claims obviously increased the amount of adjusting fees necessary to investigate the claims and consequently resulted in having to pay the claims that the county is legally responsible for. It should also be noted, and I kind of touch on this every year, 84% of the total claim payments, which were, call it $9.5 million, only 10 claims made up almost 8 million of that. So every year, it's the shock claims. Comes as no great shock that the shock claims are the ones that drive the cases because most claims are pretty minor and don't end up in litigation, but it's those large million-dollar, $2 million claims that really affect the overall total. Slide three shows the number of claims that were assigned to council this year. This is the first time that I can remember, and I tried to go back five, six years, and there certainly wasn't any in that group. I want to say within the last 10 years, we have never hit triple digits in terms of new assignments until we did this year. And the reason for that is the AB 218 claims, lawsuits. AB 218 created a three-year revival window for adult victims who were abused as minors to file civil sexual abuse lawsuits that were previously barred by the statute of limitations. There was a three-year window to file those. That three-year window is up. However, there is new litigation that's going to continue to allow these claims, but hopefully not at the rate that we receive them. We receive, the county received between 40 and 45. There are still some trickling in, not because of the AB 218, but there's still some new ones trickling in from the new legislation. We only have two of our defense firms handling those cases to try and keep it compact and so they can share information with one another, they can prepare discovery. And we also have Jen McLaren in County Council's office who kind of oversees all those from a county council standpoint. You know, the purpose of this obviously is to facilitate discovery that isn't duplicative and should in the long run cut down total legal fees and costs spent on each of the Here's the amount paid to defense counsel. Again, almost $300,000 increase, but again, these AB 218 cases generate a lot of legal fees. There really isn't a huge change from at least last year, if you look at all the individual law for- law firms. In fact, one went down. So again, I wouldn't say any of this is totally shocking in terms of the amount that we paid going up, considering the types of cases and the reasons for that. So to get back to Supervisor Kennedy's comment about, you know, here comes the claims people paying all the money. I'd like to stay on this slide for the rest of the presentation. So the county has, every year, with the cases that they close, have ended up not having to pay on claims or lawsuits, as opposed to the ones that we do have to pay on. As claims people, you know, you're always branded as the people that spend all the money.
True.
You work for insurance companies, you're the people that pay all the money.
True.
But I still think and am proud of all of our folks who handle these cases, that, you know, either by way of a defense verdict, which, again, very few cases go to trial anymore, but a lot of litigation gets filed that's non-jurisdictional, meaning the county isn't involved, and you can usually get out of those cases fairly quickly. There either isn't a jurisdiction, same thing, of course, that, there are other reasons, motions for summary judgment, other types of motions where we can get out, some cases are just flat-out dropped. Some should have never been filed in the first place because they're ridiculous. So there's a lot of reasons why there's a lot of no pays. But again, there's a lot of those cases where we spend a whole lot of money to defend the county and ultimately get out of them without having to pay any kind of settlement. So we think that 61% is pretty darn good. Because that key is so hard to read in terms of the colors, these are the five agencies' departments where the new lawsuits come from. Any case where there were three or less make up what's the miscellaneous category, which is the 16%. Due to the size of the, again, 31% from child family and support services, those are almost all the AB 218 cases. 27% from the sheriff's department, that's usually always between 30 and 40%, so that's down. 16% miscellaneous, 11% non-jurisdictional, again, county isn't involved, they've got the wrong agency. 10% from Public Works. That used to be, Public Works and the sheriff used to vie for 1 and 2 in terms of the highest number of cases. I don't know how many years it's been now where Public Works is so low, which is great. Lawsuit types, again, because the key is kind of hard to read, 61% are other personal injury cases. Those are cases where you don't have an actual injury, something broken, something, you know, whatever, that you go see a doctor for and get patched up for. So personal injury are usually emotional distress cases, cases that come from employment-related actions, discrimination, retaliation, that sort of thing. Those are paid as other personal injury, and then other emotional distress-type damages, which are, again, result from a lot of cases that don't involve the actual bodily injury. 30% are other bodily injury, so those can come from actions within a law enforcement agency, slip and falls, other roadway issues, where you do have to go to the doctor and get patched up. And, you know, you may break something, you may strain something, or unfortunately, you may pass away, although the wrongful death cases do show up in the personal injury column.
So according to this table, only 6% are auto-bodily injury?
6% are, that's right.
That's surprising.
Yep. No, 30%, Supervisor, 30% of the other bodily injury, 6% is auto-bodily injury. Maybe that's what you said, I didn't hear.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
6% are only auto-bodily injury. Yeah.
Okay.
Last slide, again, I mentioned earlier.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Back on that train of thought.
Sure.
So it's 6%, but that's the number of claims, but not necessarily the amount of the claims that we paid out.
Right, right, right. Oh, yeah, 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 the percentage of the total.
Got it, thank you.
Exactly. Yep. Last slide, again, here's what I said is almost a doubling of the amount of claims. You know, the first 12 years ran anywhere from, you know, low six, low to mid-sixes to low to mid-fives. They were all pretty steady for 12 years. And then here comes a winter like we haven't seen since probably 1986, or maybe 1995. But again, doubling of the claims because of all the, what I mentioned before, potholes, trees, that sort of thing. This has been kind of a heavy year, too, but I'm not sure that we're going to see this type of increase when I do my next report. That's it for the slides. The other item I wanted to mention was the subrogation program. So the risk management sends us cases where county property, buildings, automobiles, that sort of thing, are damaged by other parties. We have a specialized unit that goes after those people or those companies. Typically, you know, we recover from insurance companies when people are insured. There are many times, however, people are uninsured, so they will either write us, write a check to the county for the damages, or we set up payment plans, which is not our favorite thing to do, $25 a month, and you've got to owe us $10,000. So it's like, we're going to be having this file open for a while. You know, if it looks like we're not going to recover something, you know, we will try and cut deals and obviously lower the amount, see if we get a one-time payment, because it just, it doesn't make sense to be collecting, you know, small amounts over a very, very long period of time. So, and that amount this year was $527,524, not a small amount. So, questions?
Well, first of all, I'll say, my flippant comment earlier aside, I, you know, the nine and a half years I've been here and doing this and working with you, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
So you're, I think you really bring value added. One thing maybe to think about for next year's reporting, and I don't want to necessarily drive up your administrative costs, but if we could...
Oh, please do.
If we could disaggregate some of this information, maybe? For example, in, you have the big chunk that was at the sheriff's department, you know, what was carceral and what was, you know, what was in the jail and what was not in jail? And maybe even in DFAST, you know, what was CPS? And, you know, I mean, maybe some of this that we could disaggregate, which, and I'm glad you have the auto collision information, just because that helps us with, to, for our training purposes and all of that. So maybe some of this stuff could be disaggregated. I think it would be helpful to us as we respond to the situation.
Easy enough to do.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? We have any public comment on this? I'm going to guess no.
We do not have any public comments.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, for item 78, this is the Child Protective Systems Oversight Committee's 2023 Annual If we can bring up the new PowerPoint, please.
She hasn't brought it up yet.
They're bringing up your PowerPoint.
There we go. Thank you for having us. I'm Maynard Johnston, retired pediatrician. I've been on the Oversight Committee almost since its inception, early, since early 1997. This is my 51st year of being involved in child abuse prevention. So, Chris?
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Orr. I'm with the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office, and I supervise our child sexual assault and physical assault unit, as well as on child death review team and the prevention cabinet.
So thank you for this opportunity to present our committee's work and its key findings and the recommendations from the 2023 fiscal year. We hope you will find the information helpful as you focus on the county's policies and investments related to the safety and well-being of our children and their families, who we all have a collective responsibility to protect. The last time we presented was in October of last year. The committee originated in 1996 from the need for a child protective systems oversight, stemming from one case of severe child abuse that occurred around that time. The final report issued by the CCIC, or the Critical Case Investigation Committee, recommended that there be an ongoing committee that would oversee child protective systems, not just child protective services, but child protective systems. As a result, by the resolution, the Board of Supervisors established the Oversight Committee and placed it under the auspices of the Sacramento County Children's Coalition. The focus of this report was the Oversight Committee's activities from January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023. The Oversight Committee assessed progress in its overall mission and goals. It analyzed findings and made recommendations on, one, the Systems Subcommittee, where we monitored the implementation of the electronic suspected child abuse report, or ESCARs, and two, where we, and the Critical Incident Subcommittee, where we completed case reviews and analysis. There you go, Chris.
So, one way to assess how well the child protective systems are working is to look at the data related to child welfare reports and investigation. And this table shows us two data points. First, the unduplicated number of children who are subject to at least one CPS report, whether it was open for investigation or not. Second, the rate of children with allegations per 100,000. The data reflects the community's understanding of child safety, as reports are primarily made by mandated reporters, but also can come from family members, neighbors, or other people in the community. The decreased numbers, starting in 2020, are likely related to the COVID-19 pandemic that resulted in many in-person activities being moved to virtual platforms. Examples of this include schools changing from in-person, online, as well as medical and mental health providers using telemedicine to see their patients. Note that these are now an upward trend, going up in 2021, 22, and 23, as we return to in-person instruction. You'll also note, when you look at this, unfortunately, Sacramento County's rates of children with allegations exceeds the state's rates each year. So that's something that we're not really happy about. In investigation in Sacramento, the data shows that 21,000 were referred for investigation. This data actually mirrors what we're seeing in our ESCARs program. The sheriff's department, from June to December of 2023, received over 2,800 suspected child abuse reports. In just three months of this year, the entire county received over 2,400 suspected child abuse report, reports to CPS. Last year, there were over 7,000 suspected child abuse reports related just to physical and sexual assault cases. This data is compelling in that we have to do more to investigate child abuse and hold those responsible and find ways to prevent child abuse through early intervention. Yes?
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're right, go back to the last slide, please. I'm just, I'm interested in just comparison with Sacramento County. Do you happen to look at, do you drill down even further to see how Sacramento County compares with all the other urban counties in the state of California, for instance?
Yes, we do actually do that.
Which I think are counties with over a million population?
Sure, yes. In looking at this, the reason that we chose some other counties to compare against, Alameda's population is about 94% of Sacramento's, with similar racial and ethnic makeup, and had a lower median household income. Santa Clara's population is higher, has about 116,000, and, actually, we pulled that data off this slide, and I'm trying to remember why we pulled that off that slide. Keel, hold on one second.
Yeah?
Okay. We have that data, and I can find that for you all.
Okay, you can follow me. I always like, I think it's important to compare against similarly situated counties. That's a little more relevant, but this is, I agree with you that this is not a...
We actually have that data in the slide, the comparison to the other counties, and I think we have it in our annual report. And in just a moment, we can probably pull that up. It's, the comparison with the other two counties is actually in our annual report, and I'll get the page for you in just a moment on that.
Thanks. Supervisor Frost.
Yes, I have a question relating to the chart. It says allegation, the word allegations. I'm wondering, so these are just, this is just data relating to reports?
Correct.
Not all reports are, end up being legitimate, or...
Correct. A large number of them are not going to be ones that CPS opens an investigation on or has to take any action on. I'll let CPS address what they do with those, those numbers, but these are all of the referrals to CPS.
Will they be talking later about percentage of referrals to actual cases?
I will defer to CPS as to that.
Is there data?
I will defer to CPS as well, they'll talk about those.
Okay, great. I'll just, I'll just wait to hear it. Thank you.
Just one moment. And then the comparison between Sacramento and Alameda and Santa Clara is on page 11 of our report. And in 2023, there was a 45.9% difference between the number of children in poverty in Sacramento County and Alameda County. Let me see, the rates of mal-treatment have decreased in California. The percentage of children living in poverty in California, in California and three counties, has remained relatively the same over the last five years. Sacramento County is above the California State average for all five years, ranging from 16.7, 17.7, compared to 5, 15.5 and 15.6 relative to the other counties.
So give them Alameda, tell them about Alameda.
Yeah, and the chart reflecting this is on page 11 of 56 of our report.
Okay, I see the charts, that's, that's fine. I don't want to hold you up any longer. If I have any follow-up questions, I'll ask those at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to ESCARs. So a number of years back, as you all recall, we implemented the ESCARs system. And since the 2021-22 report, we've shared Sacramento's success in the ESCARs project. Prior to 2022, Sacramento was literally using paper forms with no data management to track and investigate child abuse. This resulted in thousands of cases not receiving adequate attention. I know Mr. Ho displayed a picture of some of those. I shared that same picture with you in 2022, literally piles of triplicate forms that were going to each agency and to the district attorney's office with no way of calculating the data and seeing how we're doing in serving children. The DA's office partnered with CPS and the sheriff's department to obtain the Office of Emergency Services ESCARs grant, and we are now one of only four counties in this state up and running with a modern system to track suspected child abuse and follow through with a legislative and moral mandate to investigate it. With the OES grant, the DA's office obtained a computer program that transmits suspected child abuse reports in real time to law enforcement. Some other counties in this state that obtained the same grant before us are still not up in line. Sacramento is actually leading the way, and I think we should be proud of that as a county. As you can see here, as you can see, within one year... As you can see here, as you can see, within one year of actually obtaining the grant, the sheriff was receiving electronic child abuse reports. And within five months, all law enforcement agencies in Sacramento were receiving their reports electronically. Before, when a teacher or doctor called CPS and made a report of suspected child abuse, CPS would send a form without tracking to law enforcement, sometimes in inter-office mail. And it would end up in that big pile, and they'd have to sort through it and decide what to do. Now mandated reporters can be assured that a call to CPS will actually result in a trackable document that law enforcement was informed. Now that we have the system that assures that law enforcement is informed, we can track progress in that data, and the data is actually overwhelming. I pulled the data yesterday, and the Sacramento Police Department, from January 1, 2024 until yesterday, received 2,075 SCAR forms, suspected child abuse forms. The sheriff received 2,789 suspected child abuse reporting forms. The Sacramento sheriff has currently eight detectives who work child abuse. If we divide that number of cases, in the first six months, it would be 348 cases per detective. While many of the SCAR forms can be reviewed and cleared by a sergeant or patrol officer, many do need a detective to investigate them. If only 20% need a detective assigned, each detective would have to work about 150 cases per year. The CPS Oversight Committee in the DA's office is trying to make sure that our young people are not ignored when abuse is suspected. SPD currently is working, the Sacramento Police Department is trying to move every ESCAR to be in a call for service. If you can imagine that, 2,700 calls for service, going out and actually making contact. And I think that's what citizens expect, that if someone calls CPS and CPS cross reports it to law enforcement, and a sergeant says, "We should go look at this," that it's going to be in real time. The Sacramento Police Department, right now, is the first of all the law enforcement agencies in this county to take up that desire to make every suspected child abuse report form a call for service. This isn't something that we invented. Somehow, I don't know how they do it, but LA does this. LA County makes every SCAR a call for service, and the SCARs go to their dispatcher, and a sergeant there evaluates whether someone needs to go out or not, and on the serious physical and sexual abuse and large level neglect, heavy neglect cases, someone goes out and makes contact. And sometimes they actually even beat CPS to making contact with the victims. Or they partner with CPS and go with CPS in real time.
So, have you talked about this with the Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
And have you suggested this? I mean, I assume this is something you would like to see as the District Attorney's Office.
Yes. So, we have an ESCARs steering committee, and we have initially started with just CPS, the DA's office, and the sheriff, to get them up online. We got them upline, online in June. And then by fall, we had the Police Department up online, and they were overwhelmed. It's overwhelming just to go through the backlog, because they've been trying to go through their backlog, and we've presented to the steering committee, the steering committee's presented to law enforcement, the ultimate goal is to make every SCAR that needs to be responded to a call for service. And the Police Department is the one right now that says that we're willing to try to do that right from the start. They've made requests to their city council, and their chief, to try to get the manpower to do it. It does take an increase in manpower to do it, and I think it will be on the front side, take an increase. It's going to take an increase because we're sending out an officer, but we have lots of officers that are on the streets, are doing their normal patrol work. So, a lot of those cases can be cleared by a patrol officer. Someone's made contact, and it is either something, it's maybe a misdemeanor arrest, a misdemeanor citation, or just a referral back to CPS, this doesn't require law enforcement intervention. And so, a sergeant wouldn't have to be trying to sort through thousands of them, because they'd be being cleared appropriately in real time. So, the Police Department is trying to implement that and speaking with the sergeant at the Sheriff's Department, that is their ultimate goal. Right now, they're just, they're overwhelmed with the cases that are coming in, just as regular numbered cases. So, these cases, these SCAR report forms, many people think that if you call CPS, that automatically law enforcement's going to come out. Well, currently, the way the system works is that you have to call CPS and call law enforcement if you want it automatic. And so, the Sheriff's Department is overwhelmed, as most agencies are, with just the regular phone calls, and they're now trying to do what the law mandates that we do, is actually make contact, investigate cases as appropriate. It is daunting and depressing to read the SCAR report forms, as our job as a DA's office, our job is to provide oversight. And so, I find myself and my DAs I supervise, I task them with going through and reading them, and knowing that, you know, the pile's going to be this big of ones that we can't do anything involving law enforcement, because these ones are so much more serious, these are the ones that we're going to have to do something on. And there's, I know in our oversight role, there's probably a way that I can figure out a way to share with you the content without sharing with you the specifics, but the cases are very depressing. The ones that, if most people knew that there probably is not much going to occur other than CPS intervention, it's overwhelming.
Your boss made that clear last week. So, but I'm curious, would a regular patrol deputy have the training required to make those calls?
So, for a referral out to it, I think the best role would be have a sergeant in dispatch, the sergeant who oversees the dispatch unit, assigning out people to do it. I do think patrol could go out and make initial contact on a number of cases, a number of the physical cases. You know, a child is burned, a child is hit with a bat, or something that is beyond normal parental discipline that is criminal, can be investigated, I think, by patrol officers. Obviously, the sexual assaults, the serious abusive head trauma, near-death cases, those things all have to obviously be investigated by a detective. But there's probably a large number that could be investigated by patrol level. I think if we were to ask that every child abuse only be investigated by detectives, you'd have to have thousands of detectives, it'd be impossible.
And I guess there's no downside to it, but I guess what would concern me, and I don't know, I don't have any preconceived ideas here, I'm literally ignorant on the issue, but someone who works for, you know, Ms. Caíces, you know, is trained to specifically be able to see things that maybe, you know, others might not see. And I would hate that we have a false sense of security, thinking that, you know, a deputy went out, there was no, you know, wound or bleeding or anything like that, and so therefore, you know, there's nothing going on, when, if they're not trained to see things that you're, that we're not, you know, your layman isn't trained to see. That's all I'm saying.
No, absolutely. I think the ideal world would be to have CPS and law enforcement work together.
Right.
So that, and we've definitely, over the years, definitely improved that collaboration, the DA's office and CPS and county councils have done lots of cross trainings. We've also worked with embedded CPS liaisons, working with the law enforcement agencies help with that. In an ideal world, CPS and law enforcement on suspected child abuse would go out and work hand in hand. There's a component of ESCARs that actually will help with that, too, which there's a communication platform embedded in this program that we're not yet, yet using, but it's in the future that hopefully it'll be able to be, have all CPS workers trained on this program, all law enforcement trained on it, so there can be this record of cross communication that can help improve that process.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to comment, it's a really good point, because it's one thing just to make it everyone, every ESCARs report be a call for service, but have we seen any evidence that that necessarily makes a difference in every jurisdiction, right? I mean, can you comment on that?
I think that what I can comment on is that if we don't investigate child abuse, and if our choice is nobody goes out, or a patrol officer goes out, I think a patrol officer going out is better than nothing, and...
And I agree, but not for every single case. I mean, certainly, what I'd be more interested in is seeing a comparison with some jurisdictions, maybe they don't have, make every single ESCARs a call for service, there's a triaging, you know, you analyze them and you figure out which ones maybe prompt a call for service right away. But at any rate, I'd like to, you know, I don't know if Mr. Jones or Michelle has any insight about what the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department is doing, but I would certainly like a little more information about this, about how the sheriff works with DCFAS at the county, or CPS, to triage the ESCARs cases, and which ones may rise to a call for service, so.
And right now, I can tell from what the Sacramento Sheriff's Sergeant is doing, he reviews, the Sergeant of the Child Abuse Unit reviews every SCAR along with the embedded liaison in their office, and can tell whether a case has been cleared, tells if a statement's already been taken via CPS, and is, that's the way he's triaging those currently. The goal is to have, I think, some more assurance that every case will get some sort of police documentation if appropriate. When cases don't get in interaction with law enforcement, sometimes, sometimes children feel they're not believed, sometimes they're, we've seen cases where that actually happened. One of the things that prompted ESCARs was a tragic case from one of our law enforcement jurisdictions where a child reported, and it went through CPS, it went to law enforcement, and it never got picked up by law enforcement, because it was an old case that they believed was going to be difficult to prove and corroborate, and ultimately that child committed suicide, because their perpetrator was still alive and doing things, and they thought no one believed them. That's one of the things that actually prompted us as a committee, trying to get something where we could improve this communication process and improve that. So, there are a number of cases like that. In fact, I have some more examples coming up about things like that.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll follow up with maybe Michelle and Eric about this, or Jevon. Thank you.
So, additional resources and support are needed for continued implementation and maintenance of ESCARs. The Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, City Police, Elk Grove Police, Citrus Heights, Folsom Police, and Galt Police should continue striving to ensure that all children who describe being seriously physically or sexually assaulted are interviewed, and an investigation is done to determine if the case can be proven. These are our recommendations. Local Sacramento County cities and the county should allocate more detectives for investigation of child abuse-related crimes, to ensure thorough investigation of all acts of child abuse, and that caseloads do not exceed the recommended levels of 12 to 14 per investigator officer at one time. Large caseloads decrease chances of success and decrease chance of holding abusers responsible and providing for the children. Detectives working sexual assault cases will spend hours finding and interviewing other potential victims. Every case now comes with electronic data. Molesters and abusers don't just harm children without leaving electronic trail. Many cases involve search warrants of phones or viewing of Ring cameras. Data from these sources helps find victims and prove cases. There currently is a case pending in Sacramento County involving a teacher in Sacramento that involves thousands of gigabytes and terabytes of computer data. The data actually captures children being sexually assaulted in a school. Going through that data on just one case has been nearly a full-time job for a detective for almost six months, with no sign of it being going to be done. He literally has to look at every single file on, you know, 40, 50, 60 computers with thousands of terabytes of data. So, these cases, in order to prove them and to give justice to children, take a lot of manpower. They're very different than a lot of other cases, because we seek out and we get every type of piece of evidence that we can. If there's computers or phones, we're going to try to get a search warrant to get them and get them, but then we can't just leave it unturned. In that case, as the detective's going through this, we had three or four victims that originally disclosed, but he's found other victims who did not disclose, who we know have been victimized because we see it on video. So, these cases can be very time-consuming and labor-intensive. As Sacramento enters the third and final year of the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services Grant, Sacramento County and cities must plan for the continued viability and sustainability of ESCARs. The Oversight Committee recommends that Sacramento County and other governmental agencies responsible for funding local law enforcement provide funding for continued implementation and maintenance of the ESCAR system, beginning April 1 of 2025, when the current grant funds are expended. And additionally, we recommend funding expected costs of increased numbers of investigators that are predicted to occur as law enforcement focuses more efforts on protecting children. The cost estimates are really twofold. Having the system is actually really minimal. Sacramento's pretty incredible. We got a $600,000 grant, and each year we've returned substantial portions of that back to the state. We've done it frugally. We've obtained the system through a private company, and the cost estimates for just having the program and maintenance of that program are around $100,000. Investigating what that system highlights, we should, will be much, much more. The ESCAR system has already revealed the necessity of the system. With our county doing our mandated duty to investigate and hold individuals responsible, we are seeing increased caseloads, and we're only the tip of the iceberg. People are just starting to figure out the system and what they need to actually investigate. The good news is that we're doing better at capturing events. The troubling news is that we now know that there can be multiple times a child abuse is suspected and reported, and may not be investigated because of the age of the case, lack of immediate obvious corroboration, and caseloads. We have seen caseloads, or seen cases where a child reports abuse, molestation, previously, but an investigation was not started due to the fact that the child's parents didn't call law enforcement, and then years later, with ESCARs, a new mandated reporter reported again. We can show that a SCAR was done in the past, but no criminal investigation. When a child reports molestation or their allegations of substantial physical abuse, every case should have a law enforcement investigation. The ESCAR system is forcing us as a county to evaluate how we serve and protect children. When those cases are investigated, the perpetrators should be held accountable to achieve justice for the child and protection of our community. Right now, the DA's office, child abuse prosecutors, have double historic caseloads, up to 35 cases per DA to prosecute. The CPS Oversight Committee is recommending that the city councils and all of local law enforcement and this board provide increased funding to investigate and prosecute child abuse. The benefit of the ESCAR system is the data, but it's data that we can't hide from. Sacramento Prevention Cabinet is focusing on reducing child abuse and fatalities, and one of the best ways to do that is to not ignore it and intervene when our mandated reporters warn us of trouble. Before we move on to the Critical Incidents, do you have any questions about the ESCAR system?
The Critical Incidents Subcommittee, which is part of the Oversight Committee, is made up of community members with personal and professional experience dealing with children and children's services. And we met regularly in 2023. The committee partners with Child Protective Services, and there are two quality improvement committees. The Small Quick, as we call it, that's a smaller committee, and then the larger committee is called the Large Quick. So, we participate in those discussions that take place there. The goal of these reviews that take place, excuse me, the goal of these reviews is to determine the current systemic issues in CPS that result in the work that is, results in work that is not thorough or thoughtful. We've reviewed eight cases this past year, 2023. Three were fatalities and five were near fatalities. Case reviews found that in every single case, a prior history of CPS involvement, including 88%, of which had CPS 88% of which had CPS involvement both as children and as parents. Additionally, domestic violence, mental health issues, and substance use continue to be present in the families involved in fatal and near fatal incidences. These risk factors play a part in accidental and negative outcomes for children and for our community. The only cases reviewed are cases of critical incidents, which include deaths and near deaths. We do not participate in any general review of cases, just the critical incidences. The CI Subcommittee identified social worker and supervisor critical thinking errors which resulted in missed opportunities. A couple of examples of these errors include accepting a parent's denial of having hallucinations despite mandated reporters stating that the parent was placed on a psychiatric hold, finding an allegation of general neglect due to a child witnessing family violence in the home to be inconclusive despite the social worker obtaining statements from the child and the victim that the incident had happened. Investigation are not always thorough and do not always comply with agency standings. Concerns noted were incorrectly completing structured decision-making or SDM assessment tools, or social workers failing to contact appropriate collateral resources or sources for information. The Oversight Committee does recognize that human and critical thinking errors are always a possibility. However, these errors were not corrected by safeguards existing in the agency such as supervisor review or case staffing. We have three recommendations, all of which have been recommendations over the last three to five years, and they are as follows. CPS should continue developing and implementing strategies to strengthen the supervision process and continue addressing critical thinking errors across the whole agency. CPS should strengthen all protocols and their implementation that require that the relevant case collaterals are consulted and that all information related to the child, family, and environment is gathered and considered before a case is closed. The protocols should include details about collaterals to be considered relevant based on common circumstances and age groups. CPS should strengthen the implementation of its practice of consulting with children's medical and mental health providers as part of the investigation and safety planning. Our work plan, which is quite ambitious for this year, is as follows. We're, are going to continue to partner with CPS to review case reports prepared by CPS regarding critical incidences of CPS-involved children. Continue to collaborate with the Prevention Cabinet to implement the 10-year strategic plan to eliminate child abuse, near fatalities, and fatalities by the year 2030, an ambitious goal. Learn about issues surrounding the county's Centralized Placement Services Unit, or CPSU, and the DCFAS's Welcome Homes and provide a special report potentially with recommendations. Continue our work plan, just provide updates to the Board of Supervisors and the Chiefs of Staff on recommendations made in the Oversight Committee's past years and also the most recent 2023 annual report. Continue discussions with local hospitals and medical groups on how they are, and how they might strengthen administration or collaboration with law enforcement, CPS, and community partners. Engage with the Children's Law Center and share the recommendations made in the 2021, '22, and 2023 annual reports. Meet and discuss progress made on the recommendations regarding ESCARS. Engage with the Special Assault and Forensic Evaluation, or SAFE, Center regarding law enforcement and SAFE Center caseloads. Not listed on this slide is an emerging topic, although we've dealt with this before, and that is to learn more about CPS and their public health nurse program, including their strengths and roles and barriers that they experience in providing support for social workers. The work plan is excessive and extensive and may be excessive, and the Oversight Committee may continue this billing over until the 2025. So would like to acknowledge a lot of people, there's some here today to my right and to my back. Before closing, we'd like to thank, acknowledge these people for all the work that they've done in preparing this report and allowing this report to come into fruition. Would like to thank the committee members of the Oversight Committee, which have given selflessly of themselves over this last year and have spent many hours working on the topics that we've decided to discuss and also in writing this report. Also, the department, the Sacramento County Department of DCFAS, especially the Director of that Department, Michelle Cahaeas, also the head of Child Protective Services, Melissa Lloyd, the Child Abuse Prevented Council, especially Chief Program Officer Stephanie Beigler who's here, and also the Evaluation Program Manager, Jasmine Brosnan. We also need to thank, whose work made this all happen really, our staff persons from the Children's Coalition and DCFAS persons, Carrie Emery Cotner and Abigail Nosie-Herald. They provide us with administrative and overall support. They've been doing it ever since the inception of our committee. We also would like to thank the county councils' help, and they meet with us every time we have a meeting, and that's Kelsey Johnson, and also Rob Perry. We want to thank them. We'd also like to thank the board for the opportunity to share our work, insights, and recommendations. We appreciate the county's continued investments in services and programs that especially address child and family well-being, prevention, and early intervention, which significantly and positively impact child safety and the board's general interest in our community's children and their families. All the photos that you've seen, there not been that many, but they're all of families from within Sacramento County, and we've been given permission to have them in our presentation. So if there are any questions, we would try to answer them. Now, our report, these slides weren't, there wasn't, there was a lot of information, but not all that much, but where the information is, is in our report, which is 56 pages long, and it goes into great detail, has a lot more information, and so if you haven't looked through that, and if you have questions either today or after going through that report, be sure to reach out to us. We'd be happy to try to answer those questions.
If I could maybe to address the questions of Supervisor Desmond and Frost. Very clearly, there are some differences between Alameda and Santa Clara and ourselves, and what we have learned is that Alameda County has a lower, had lower rates of child maltreatment substantiations from years 2019 through 2023, with a low of 4.2 times fewer than Sacramento County. Santa Clara with a population and geographic spread similar to Sacramento, but with a higher median income, also had lower rates across all years. Santa Clara had 2.8 times less child maltreatment substantiations in 2022 and 2023 than Sacramento. And I apologize, didn't have it for you earlier.
Thank you. Okay, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, that's a great segue for the first part of my questions, which is in the charts on page 11 to 16, which really delve into this comparison statewide and then the three different county levels. Am I interpreting sort of the analysis correctly, that it is the percentage of overall households in poverty that we attribute to the higher rates within Sacramento County than Alameda or Santa Clara?
I don't know if you can draw a direct connection. There certainly is. There is more increased poverty, but I don't know if you can attribute substantiations directly to poverty or not.
Well, first of all, it takes three things to abuse a child. First, you have to have a child. Second, you have to have the propensity to abuse, so that's why it's important to try to break this cycle of abuse, because child, children that were abused as children become child abusers as adults, so the goal is to break that. And then the third thing you need is stress. So if you have kids, you have a propensity to abuse, but you're not under much stress, you have a decent job, a nice home, you know, life's going pretty smoothly, you're probably not going to abuse your children. But if you're unemployed, you're having trouble finding a home, a place to live, other factors that can come up, then that puts you at risk for abusing your children. So, so yes, low poverty is a factor, it's a stress factor, that's how it relates.
So let me back up, first of all, and just say how much I appreciate all of you who are involved in standing up for these innocent people and trying to prevent this from happening. And when we talk about getting upstream, this is about as far upstream as we can get that has societal implications down the road. So apologize for just jumping right into it without making that acknowledgement first. Let me ask my question in a different way than, rather than trying to draw my own conclusions, to what do you attribute the fact that particularly Santa Clara County had such a dramatic decrease in their incidence of maltreatment substantiations from 2019 to 2023, whereas Sacramento County and the statewide average had a decrease, but not as significant?
Well, the only thing I can say is it's also that it's not, which doesn't show up in the charts, is the way that child abuse is handled in each county. It's different in each county, and Michelle may be able to address that. But we, if you go back to our charge when we were first formed back in 96, 97, one of the things we, our charge was to do was to look at other counties and see how we did compared to those and try to figure out why. And we've done that to some extent, but not to a great extent. The problem is we only have so much time, and, but that's something we want to do, is go looking, you know, not just look at numbers, but try to figure out why those numbers are the way they are. Why are Sacramento's the way they are? Michelle and Melissa have addressed that to some extent by talking about the way data is collected in the different counties, but I'm not an expert on that, and she may have that, but we, that's something we should pursue, and if we had time, we would definitely do that, because we want to look at best practices, right? I mean, that's what the goal is, and find out why are they doing things so much better on the surface, you know? You know, it's how it looks is, it doesn't matter what's going on, but if it looks good, then that's what people want to see, don't they? They want to see good numbers, and so, but, you know, that's all I can say about that.
Well, I hope you do have the time to take a deeper dive and hopefully uncover, you know, as you say, if it's best practices or things that can be emulated. And in particular, I look forward to, in your work plan, the work you would be doing regarding the CPSUs and the Welcome Homes. That's been, since my tenure on this board, a tumultuous situation, and I think a lot of the hurdles that we face start with legislation that, on the face of it, is well-intended or seems to be, you know, standing up for the rights of the young people, but really it's hampering those of us who truly have their best interest at heart from, I think, providing a better environment for them, so.
That is one of the reasons we decided to want to tackle that, so we could present in a public document to a legislative body at this level, that hopefully can speak to a higher legislative body, some of the things that may seem nonsensical to the average public, that, you know, you can't stop a child from leaving when they're going to go do harm to themselves, you can't take away their phone, you can't, you're the government acting as the parental guardian of that person. So we're going to highlight that, hopefully, some of those issues, hopefully in one of our future reports, and hopefully someone can make a difference.
Well, we've, we've had Michelle and Melissa come talk to us this year, and just within the last couple of months, about what's happening, and without going into much detail, I can say that things have improved dramatically, and you may be aware of that. But the Welcome Homes, and they're also near, if they haven't already gotten a license already, in one of the homes, and so I think things are progressing in a, in a good way that way. But we're going to be looking into that throughout the year, and then we plan to have either a separate report, which is most likely, that deals with that from our perspective, as opposed to putting in our annual report.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I just want to echo Supervisor Hume's comments regarding the Welcome Home. Your report is a little overwhelming, the work that you've done, and I want to thank the Child Protective Systems Oversight Committee, because your work is, it's clear that you're working really hard on this. There's, we have, I think, over 68 boards and commissions, and some really, some of the commissions really bring valuable information to us, and yours is one of them. And I, I also wanted to add to the comments relating to the Welcome Home, that idea of, you know, the condition for the young people, but also for the workers, which has been, you know, it's just the overall situation that's been a real challenge, and we've had both, we've had the workers actually come and speak to us and in public comment about the conditions, and they're fearful, you know, when they go to work, so it's, it's definitely an important priority, I think, to look into it. And that was just it. I didn't have any further questions, but I wanted to thank you so much for the insight that you've given us. I'm a little overwhelmed at it. It's, it is very sad, the conditions of, you know, child abuse, so thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to quickly thank you and the Children's Coalition and the members of the Oversight Committee for all your work. It is invaluable for this county and the most vulnerable in the county, so thank you for being here today. I look forward to hearing our next agenda item from Michelle and Melissa, and I'm sure we'll probably have a lot of questions from them about, about some of the items that you highlighted in your report, so.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. Do we have any public?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your work. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not have any comments. Let me just double check, sorry. We don't have any double comments.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Item 79 is the response to the Child Protective Systems Oversight Committee's 2023 Annual And I'll ask if you could switch out the PowerPoint.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and the Board. Melissa Lloyd, Deputy Director with Child Protective Services. I first would like to thank you for the opportunity to provide information on the response to the Oversight Committee's 2023 Annual Report. I would first like to start with acknowledging appreciation for the Oversight Committee for its ongoing commitment and dedication to improving child safety in Sacramento County. I'd also like to take a moment to thank all of our dedicated employees at Child Protective Services, who tires tirelessly work every day to care for children and families in our community. And I'd also like to give acknowledgement to the multidisciplinary collaborations that are present every day and continue to get stronger. You know, research shows that when child and family-serving systems work together to provide services, outcomes are better for kids and families. And the collaborations that are in place in Sacramento County really do help to break down the silos in regard to the individual work that we're doing for the same cause. The work we're doing helps to ensure that families and children are wrapped with support and services, and a lot of our partners that are part of our collaborations include other Sacramento County departments, the Department of Probation, Department of Health Services, and specifically Public Health, Behavioral Health, and our Substance Use and Prevention Team, as well as Sacramento Sheriff's Department and First Five. Additionally, the Sacramento County Office of Education, all of our school district teachers and staff that work specifically in the roles that they hold, but also hold large responsibility around child safety. And in addition to them, we just have a vast array of community partners, CAPC, the Black Child Legacy Program, and all of our FRCs that are in our counties. The other acknowledgement that I'd like to give is to that of prevention. As has been shared to this board, we have our prevention cabinet, and we also have tremendous support from the board for continued support on prevention efforts in our county. The Families First Prevention legislation really did highlight and put a, really put a spotlight on the importance, and it's been talked about today, about the upstream approach to prevent child, children from coming into care. And I can very happily report that our foster care population in Sacramento County continues to decrease. Specific to operations and practice, there are a number of strategies that we implement to strengthen the supervision process and continue to address critical thinking. I will highlight a few that we believe have strengthened critical thinking. I'd like to start with sharing a little bit more about our supervisor cohort, which I shared with this board last year. We started this in the fall of 2022, and we were able to launch a second cohort this year in March. What the cohort supports is enhancing information and training to help further teach supervisors how to deliver clear direction, address bias, coach employees, and provide effective feedback. Our supervisors are safeguards, and we have committed to this investment to support their ongoing learning and to continue to build their skills to deliver high-quality services to children and families. What we have learned from the first cohort in 2022 is that we do see an enhancement of teaming supervisors with other supervisors working together, as well as supervisors with their individual units. And we are hoping to see an increase in employee performance ongoingly. The second area that I'd like to highlight are case discussions. These case discussions are based on matters discussed at the Critical Incident Subcommittee of the Oversight Committee, and that's a little bit about what Dr. Johnston shared a few minutes ago. The case discussions are held quarterly, and they are mandatory for social workers, supervisors, and program managers. The case discussions provide for a dedicated time to review and examine an investigation or case and analyze our practice. Each case discussion session is built upon a shared understanding that we all pursue this challenging work with a goal of ensuring child safety and well-being while simultaneously strengthening families. We are always striving to improve our practice to achieve these goals, and through the case discussion process, we are able to identify good practice behaviors as well as missed opportunities. Thirdly, I'd like to share a little bit about an update to our policy and procedures. We have developed a robust process for developing, updating, and changing policies and procedures. We have dedicated policy writers. They connect with our Workforce Development Unit, which is our department's training unit, to align necessary trainings to the policies that we're developing or that we're revamping. One wonderful part of this work that we're doing with policies and procedures is that we have dedicated county council who supports us, and their dedication and support has really ensured compliance with statutory requirements. We've also been able to make mid-course adjustments, and that wasn't something that was as common in the past, where a policy would go into effect and we may not revisit it for several years. And now with the services and supports that we have within our policy unit, we are able when it could be a social worker, a manager, a supervisor who brings up a question about a policy, or it might be something that we realize from a critical incident that occurred, or maybe just a trend that we're seeing. So when we revisit what's in policy, we can make those immediate adjustments as needed. Lastly, we also, because the case discussions focus on critical incidents, we also, to ensure that we are addressing other matters that come in at high or very high risk, we also do case reviews of investigations. And this is with our emergency response managers. They conduct reviews of high and very high-risk investigations to identify themes, strengths, and areas needing improvement. The findings are then taken to other managers, peer-to-peer, other supervisors, peer-to-peer, and also to unit meetings and other meetings to talk about themes that are being seen. Additionally, social workers regularly consult with internal sources such as PHNs, behavioral health clinicians, outstation law enforcement social workers, and we regularly hold medical neglect review team meetings to discuss situations involving children with complex medical conditions. I'm really happy to share, specific to behavioral health support, Behavioral Health Services added a CPS liaison to their team last year, Rhapsody Flores, and Rhapsody was selected for this position and has been a valuable resource to our staff as she helps with behavioral health connections for children and families. She assists in troubleshooting complex matters, participates in a variety of staffings and meetings with various system partners to help support service planning. And so that really does demonstrate the teaming and the collaborations that we continue to advance in. Specific to ESCARs, DCFAS concurs with the information Mr. Orr shared about ESCARs, supports continued implementation of ESCARs, and is hopeful the steering committee is able to take their learning further. ESCARs has streamlined CPS hotline operations and increased communication and collaboration with local law enforcement in Sacramento County. I'll talk a little bit about our continued efforts. I'd like to share a little bit about our improved outcomes. We have consistently outperformed the overall performance of the rest of California in a couple of our permanency measures, and you'll see on the slide, it references P1 and P2. Essentially, what these two measures indicate is that kids in out-of-home care are achieving permanency at above-average rates in comparison to other counties. We are also seeing an upward trend of reunification rates and seeing a decrease in reentry rates. We are also seeing a decrease in the number of placement moves as we are becoming more intentional and having more teaming around finding successful placements. Specific to system partnerships, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we continue to work with several other county departments and community-based agencies to promote better outcomes for kids and families. I also wanted to share a little bit about family finding, specific to our continued efforts. In the fall of 2023, we took steps to launch a kin-first initiative. This is a vital step forward in our shared mission to strengthen our kin-first culture and provide upfront family engagement, enhanced family finding, and support to kinship caregivers and the children in their care. We know that when kids are placed with relatives, they experience more stability, less placement moves, they're better able to maintain cultural and spiritual connections, and experience more long-term positive outcomes. Additionally, research shows that kin caregivers also provide higher levels of permanency as relatives are more likely to provide a permanent home through guardianship, custody, or adoption. Children experience less reentry into foster care when living with kin, and kinship care supports siblings staying together more so than kids who are in traditional foster care. Our initiative is a partnership between Sacramento County and Casey Family Programs. Through this partnership, we are working with the California Department of Social Services, the UC Davis Center for Excellence in Family Finding and Engagement, Think of Us, and Implematics. Although he's not here today, I would like to give a nod and thank Supervisor Serna for his interest and support in our kinship work. And I'm also very happy to share that since September of 2023, we have increased the number of kids placed with relatives from 22.2% to 30.3%. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that you have and happy to give any information that I can about the previous presentation and the data.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Melissa, for being here and your response. I'm glad you highlighted that kinship, kinship first. I think that is a great approach and has seen a lot of success, and I think it's the right way to approach it. So thanks for highlighting that. Also, really appreciate you talking a lot about prevention, because, I mean, hearing from the Coalition wasn't, I mean, it was more about the response, and I think we have to obviously be focusing a lot on the prevention. But in terms of some of the specific issues, both the ESCARs and some of the recommendations and challenges that they highlighted, and then also on the critical incident response, some of the concerns, can you reply to those, both of those? I mean, I think ESCARs is primarily about, you know, they highlighted Sacramento Police Department and making every one of those ESCARs entry a call for service, and maybe you can talk a little bit about what we discussed, maybe what you're seeing as a best practice in how to respond to those, and then also in some of the concerns I think the Coalition has with our critical incident response.
Sure. So I'll start with ESCARs. Specific to ESCARs, we are, our leadership at our hotline is looking at the, and as Mr. Orr shared, they are on the steering committee, they are looking at the model that LA County has implemented and looking at what does it all mean, right? Are they going out specifically on certain cases? So there's just a little bit more to learn about that, and our team is very committed to doing that. Specifically with our work with law enforcement, what I will say, and just because I know that it's hard kind of knowing the day-to-day operation, is that when we have a circumstance where we do need law enforcement assistance, regardless of what jurisdiction it is, we are typically, on average, able to get assistance with a matter that, again, requires it or we have assessed. There are times when law enforcement is the first out to a circumstance, and they're the ones calling into the hotline. For the circumstances where the call is coming in from someone other than law enforcement, our team is really good at cross-reporting, and if, again, there's an in-person response needed, we are, we're having pretty good outcome from that. Specific to, I think there's a little bit more to share with specifics to law enforcement going out on every matter. I believe it's, to give some context to it, there are a lot of calls that CPS receives, and thank you Supervisor Frost for highlighting that. You noted that in the data that was shown, those are allegations. Our substantiation rate, as has been discussed, is about 5%. Not all calls are specific to physical and sexual abuse. Many of our calls are specific to neglect. And when, I think, for Supervisor Desmond, what you were kind of getting at when you were commenting earlier, was really, does law enforcement need to come out on everyone? And are they equipped? And I think that our law enforcement partners are doing more and more to be able to engage in different ways with families, kind of know when it's appropriate for them to take that engagement a little bit further. But I think as we move along and work with our law enforcement partners, we're learning more about what is appropriate for a family. Is it that law enforcement does show up? Is there something around neglect that CPS is fully capable of addressing and can call law enforcement in on? So it, and I know that's not what Mr. Orr was, was, he was speaking specifically to when there is a crime and there is something that law enforcement needs to respond to. I think that as we go on, there is a lot to understand about the backlog and what could have been done in certain circumstances, but it doesn't, it doesn't, and you may know this, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there wasn't action taken on that family and that there wasn't something done for that family. It's that whatever that, those next steps in terms of possible prosecution, further investigation by law enforcement, what needs to be done there. But overall, our partnership with law enforcement, we're really good at bringing matters forward to our forensic interviewing center, the SAFE Center. We have that partnership, and we have law enforcement there at the SAFE Center with us. I think there's just more to learn as we go on.
Okay, fair enough, and I appreciate the information. I just want, I want to know that, you know, our Sheriff's Department is a good partner on making sure we have the best response from law enforcement, and I do know our sheriff is certainly committed to the well-being of children in our community. And just very briefly, what about some of the critical incident findings or recommendations from the Coalition?
Yeah, so on those eight cases, which it makes up about 0.8% of the cases that we have opened, we continue to, it's, there are concerns that come up when there are critical incidents, and we learned that there was a miss on our part. Overall, we do look at the data, and like I just shared with you, it is a small percentage of our cases that we serve, but one is too many, right? And so we're constantly working at, and some of those practice improvement areas that I highlighted, we're really working at continued training, updating our policies, doing a lot of work with our supervisors, really trying to work on workload for our staff so that they do not have a lot of barriers to being able to thoroughly investigate, thoroughly do good engagement work with a family. And sometimes we have little wins along the way. Specific to our policy and procedure, there's one little change that we made that we're starting to get feedback on, and that's that we changed our, we changed our program to where the social worker doesn't have to do a login to get into reading a policy and procedure. And that doesn't sound like much to many, but when you're out and you're wanting to reference a policy and you're working on finishing an investigation, just being able to click into getting a policy versus going through a login process, again, it's kind of small, but it's a, it's a big win and social workers and... of small, but it's a big win, and social workers and our supervisors have appreciated that little change. So we're just learning along the way around each one of these matters in our work with the Oversight Committee and at our Quality Improvement Committee. We continue to determine better ways to address issues that come up.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms of the comparison to other counties, I mean, and I appreciate in the coalition, in their presentation, in the chart, they were talking, it was more comparison with allegations, but if you go into the report, I believe it was substantiated maltreatment. And so they did compare, those are Alameda and Riverside, or Alameda and Santa Clara Counties for substantiated maltreatment. And maltreatment, I'm assuming, is a broader classification than just abuse, right? Maybe encompasses neglect and...
Yes.
Okay. I am very interested, and I wouldn't necessarily put all the burden on the coalition to do this, but I am interested in seeing, I think there are nine, 10 urban, 10 or 11 urban counties in the state of California, how we stack up with the rest of the counties. I mean, the coalition's chart compared two counties showed Sacramento County has a much higher poverty level than these other counties, and I think it's reasonable to draw an inference that there might be a correlation there, but I'd like to see how we compare with these other counties. And, you know, I think we're doing amazing work. You are, I mean, so many people are big fans of yours and Michelle's and DCFAS and Sacramento County, but I want to make sure we also, once in a while, will step back and look at a larger, from a larger perspective, what is going on with these counties that we haven't done here? What is different? What is inherently different that's tying our hands, perhaps? So I'm very interested in that. And coming up with the BHAG, Big Hairy Audacious Goals, you know, something new we can do in Sacramento County, because it is, I hate to see a chart like that, where we're lagging so far behind in these other counties. And then finally, on the welcome homes, I'm glad it's going to be in the work plan next year, you're going to be talking about that. I think the majority of the welcome homes are in District 3, and Melissa, you've had a lot of interactions with my office about them, about some of the challenges. And it's, you know, I think about Supervisor Hume, we had a theme this morning about the legislature thinking they know what's best at the local level and sometimes not really understanding all the implications or maybe unintended consequences. And I think about the welcome homes in the context of, yes, I know the idea is to get children, vulnerable older foster youth, out of these institutional settings, but I think sometimes what that does, it sometimes makes them easier for others to access them when they're out in the communities, when people find out where they are. You and I have talked about this, I've talked to Sheriff Cooper about this, about some of the challenges that the Sheriff's Department has with the welcome homes, because people can find them. And whether that's, it could be a drug dealer, it could be a pimp, people who are exploiting these young people, and it's a horrible, horrible thing. Do you have a sense of, with substantiated maltreatment reports, do we see a disproportionate amount originating from children who are in those welcome homes? I mean, or are you seeing a lot of it?
No, and we can definitely...
I'm just curious.
...put numbers together.
Okay.
No, what we have seen in Sacramento County, still zero to five is our largest population that we get calls on and that makes up the majority of our population in foster care. What we have seen in the last few years is we have seen more calls to our hotline, specific to parents who are challenged with being able to effectively address children's mental health issues, and that's where the really great partnership with behavioral health has come in and been just phenomenal. So we do find a lot of parents where there's not necessarily abuse or neglect occurring, but there is possibility of them neglecting not by choice. It sounds a little weird, but they don't, they're at their wits' end. They don't know what to do, their children, their child may be involved in substances, there may be some exploitation going on. And so what we do with those families is, like any other family, we come in and engage and try and get them connected to services, bring other family in to help create their natural support system. But we have seen that. We have seen more calls coming in, but we are pretty successful in getting them connected to services, and I think there's been a good response from community around what is needed for our older youth population. The schools are doing a lot, there's a lot that SCOWE is doing, so, but I can't say that it's, that's specifically bringing our number to where it is.
Okay, okay. I will, go ahead, Siobhan.
Supervisor Desmond, if I can just add, with regards to the welcome homes, the team's currently preparing an update. I appreciate the acknowledgement that the team's been doing a lot of work to get us to where we need to be with that. So we're working on an update and action plan that we'll be able to share with the board soon and with the CPS Oversight Committee.
It's just, this conversation makes me think about kind of the data there, because I know taking some of these young folks out of an institutional setting is better to have them in a community, you know, much more likely that they're going to succeed, but on the other hand, maybe it exposes them to some other things. And I think that's the kind of thing that is worth discussing with members of the legislature, who impose these things on us at the local level without understanding the challenges that we face. But I know, Melissa, I just want to end this with thanking you again, because I know, you know, the discussions we've had with you and Michelle about some of the issues, and you are just on top of it, and the effort that, and I know I'm kind of far afield here, but you're, the efforts you take to talk with members of the community where these welcome homes are and talk with us, and just, I want you to know, I really, really appreciate that and appreciate your work. So, thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you. First of all, let me just begin by saying, I can't even, like, literally can't even wrap my head around what the folks that are out there doing the frontline work encounter on a day-to-day basis. Breaks my heart. People who abuse animals and abuse children, you know, I would like to thank the optimist in me that there are very few that are truly evil inside, and many of them do have these contributing factors or external forces that have brought them to their wits' end, as you couched it. And that's why I think it's really great that we are doing the work we're doing around the FRCs and the family finding and the kinship efforts and some of these things, like you say, to try and give a better support system. But in reading the critical incident report, first of all, were those eight cases where they just picked it at random, or you say it represents less than 1% of the cases that are open right now, but...
No, what the Critical Incident Subcommittee, the cases that they review are a, when a circumstance comes in that's a fatality or a near fatality, where we had CPS involvement within two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So in reading those, I did find two common threads through all of them, and one was, which you alluded to, the missed opportunities and where the social worker and/or supervisor wasn't as thorough, either in some of these external contributing factors and/or making sure that they were connected to the appropriate resources or making sure who was involved with what custodial care. And then the other thing that I found in each of the cases, and this goes back to what Dr. Johnston alluded to, is that I think in all eight cases, at least one of the adults involved in the situation had prior CPS involvement themselves.
Yes.
And so, you know, if I were looking to give a rah-rah speech to those frontline folks, it would be, one, I mean, obviously, the work that they're doing is critically important, to not have these near fatalities and fatalities, but also, they are right there in potentially breaking the cycle for future generations of abusers. And so I just bless you for the work that you do and keep it up, and I look forward. And I'm glad that this is such, it seems to be, you know, maybe not symbiotic, but it's a relationship where it seems like you guys really work together to try and figure out, like, how can we do better? How can we be better?
Yes.
And how can we have better outcomes, rather than, you know, beating each other over the head, here's what we did wrong, no, you're not listening to me, and whatever else. So tough work that you do, and thank you for doing it, and thank you for trying to figure out how to do it better.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Frost.
Melissa, and also Michelle, I just want to thank you, and I also want to thank your staff. I, in the past few months, I've had some situations in my district that have brought me closer in communication with the work that you're doing there, and your people are extremely sensitive to, in complex situations. Sometimes, in some cases, in my world, it involves families and/or not families, and the communications I've had, the work that they've done with my constituents has been very thoughtful and compassionate and sensible, and in a lot of ways, it's, they've been very helpful in creating an atmosphere where everyone can just kind of relax and chill out, and they've managed it so well. So I don't often get a chance to see you and thank you for what you do, but I want you to know that it, you're touching lives and you're helping people, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing. And I hope you'll let your team know, too.
Absolutely. Thank you, yeah. Thank you for all the compliments to the staff. They're amazing.
Thank you, Supervisor. Do we have any public comment?
Would you not?
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
That's the county exec's comments.
Mr. Villanueva?
Yes, thank you.
That should be you.
I thought that was a question, not a statement. I was waiting for my cue. Every meeting, I try to bring some positive, outstanding programs that we have in the county, and today's no different. Last Friday, I was able to attend a graduation ceremony for the Sacramento County Leadership Development Academy. This is an outstanding program led by Dr. Jennifer Norman and her LDA facilitators. She has about 35 of them that help her carry on this program. This program is really made to develop and grow leadership skills and help not only build excellence in the county and in the individuals, but also directly and positively contribute to the county's culture. So, and I think it's had a direct impact on the culture. We've had 105 graduates so far since the inception of the program back in July of 2022. I've continued to be impressed with the graduates' speeches and ceremonies that they have. They've spoke about the impact of the programs on themselves, but not only as they grow professionally, but as they grow personally as well. So during this series, we created a series of videos to continue to encourage folks to apply for this academy. While we have 100 and so graduates, we have over 400 applicants. It's a very tough program to get into, and people are incredibly proud when they get in there and complete those, this academy. So I just wanted to share one quick, short video of some of the alumni and how they speak about the program and the success that they've had. So, thank you.
My team witnessed me being very excited about the LDA, and every single time I came back, they would notice I had a new learning piece for coaching and development. And they've actually taken some of those pieces from me and started incorporating it for their direct reports as well.
What surprised me most about doing the program was how little I knew about my own leadership skills and where I needed to improve, and it was just eye-opening for me to learn that in the class.
I can't believe how much I learned, and I got straight to work trying to be, you know, a better leader for my team.
It not only teaches you certain concepts for your leadership, but it will teach you items like self-awareness and emotional intelligence that you will not only use in your day-to-day work operations, but also in your real life.
The Leadership Development Academy doesn't stop when you're done with the class. It's really about incremental improvements constantly for the rest of your career and life. You know, these are things that I try and use at home as well, just being a better husband and father for my family.
I am extremely proud of this. I don't even have my degrees displayed, but I have this displayed, because this gave me tools that I'm going to be able to use going forward for the rest of my career and in my life.
I have been really trying to recruit people to enroll into the Leadership Academy. It is just like, you know, passing out the water, everybody needs it.
Thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Is that all your comments?
That is all my comments.
Okay. Next item, Supervisor comments, is any? Seeing none, we're adjourned.